Very close, it's seven o'clock, so we're all here in a corner. I'm calling Adrian and all the meeting to order. Those in the audience and the council members, please just make sure that your cell phones are either on silent or not. And we will begin this meeting from over to silence. Hello, I'm Sarah, President of the Fudge of the League. President of the League, you sit beside me, I'll be in my seat. And I salute the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Cindy Kirkland, you may roll call, please.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Ree.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Lanu.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Sanders.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Support.
I want to make an amendment to be as simple as possible. I want to add an additional item to discuss the issues related to speeding, vehicle speeding.
Right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda, where the added item for speeding is concerned?
So.
Support. Cindy Kirkland, make up.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Ree.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Sanders.
Yes.
Alright, so do we have Brooke Melick here from Southern?
I'm going to speak for Brooke.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Madam City Manager. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, some of you know me, some of you don't. I've been coming to the council meetings in Albion for a long time. Since we decided to get into the marijuana business here in the city. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about our, our medical dispensary centers up on Eaton Street. My name is Mark Gooden, and I'm one of the owners of the company. We are the only licensed marijuana dispensary in Albion. Although it's an interesting thing, and somebody just brought it to our attention, we just stopped into a dispensary off of Conroe Road on the way up here, whose mailing address is actually Albion. They're in Palmer Township, but apparently their mailing address is Albion. They are a medical dispensary and a recreational use dispenser. We're not licensed to sell adult-use marijuana because you won't allow an adult-use dispensary in Albion. And we're not sure if that matters. We don't sell to children under 21 years old. By the way, I dropped a packet off in front of each one of them, so that you can have one. It has a lot of anecdotal, not anecdotal, it has a lot of information attached to what I'm talking about right now. We are regulated and audited by the state of Michigan, whether we're adult use or whether we're medical. We came here three, three years ago to build a really great dispensary, and we think we have. The only marijuana we could sell was medical because that was basically what the state of Michigan provided for. We invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to make a beautiful building on Eaton Street. And if anybody's been in the dispensary, we just had a car run through our window. And there's a police report somewhere next door. They ran up over the ramp and ran into the window, I'm not sure quite how they did that, but they busted up the window pretty good and messed up the map a bit. But we think it's a pretty cool little dispensary. The only marijuana that we plan to hire and employ 25-plus people at that facility. We plan to invest in Albion by giving part of the profits from park improvements and kids programs. You don't know me as a business owner. Your former zoning manager knew me as a business owner. Because he used to do business with us in the steel industry. In every city that we have a factory, we do business and we give money to the police athletically. We give them to children's charities. We give money to help out parks and recreation. We give money to the city, because that's the responsible thing to do, if you're a business owner in a city. When we opened, we hired 22 people. And that's kind of an important number. Then the state of Michigan approved adult use. The number of adult-use dispensaries has soared, has soared. You can take a look at a map under section A of that pamphlet that we sent out. And you can see the number of adult-use or mixed-use dispensaries all around Albion. On the way up here, we stopped, of course, at
Kinsha.
Kinsha, thank you, thank you. Because I'd never been in there before, and I wanted to see what it's like. And really, what they're, what's going on there is, it started as a medical dispensary. It's a mixed-use dispensary right now. By the end of this year, 2021, they will no longer be allocated to carry medical at all. And they will be an adult-use only dispenser. If you take a look at the products they have on the shelf, they have a few items on the medical side and tons of items on the recreational use side. We're surrounded completely by dispensaries between Jackson and Battle Creek. There are about 20 adult-use facilities, and there's a map on section B that shows that. You don't need a medical card to go into an adult-use dispenser, even if you're looking for relief of pain, aches. I have Crohn's disease. I started with the whole project because I had Crohn's disease. And I found that marijuana is good for it. It helped my gut. You, you can only buy marijuana in the state of Michigan if you're 21 years or older. Youngsters can't buy it. And then every dispensary, they check ID, they check driver's license. I mean, I just had my driver's license checked. I'm a 75-year-old man. Just like I was a kid, you know, like they used to do when I would sneak off and buy a beer somewhere. We're down right now to foreign employees. Because we're losing tens of thousands of dollars every month. Because people don't want to buy medical marijuana cards. They're not renewing them. I didn't renew mine. I don't have to. The people that are driving by from Chicago can't buy from us. Why should we spend $5,000 a month to have billboards? When we can't sell to them? We can't get them a medical marijuana. If you see the Laura monthly reports, you'll see that the sales of medical marijuana are dropping off dramatically. And the sales of adult-use marijuana are rising dramatically. And this is going on all over the state of Michigan. And frankly, every state who has both is finding the exact same thing. If we're not allowed to have adult-use marijuana and sell it, we're going to continue to lose tens of thousands of dollars every month. On top of the more than quarter of a million dollars that we invested in the property. We are on our way to bankruptcy. In my seven-five years, I have never been bankrupt, ever, in my life. And to think that I could actually lose a business that I started. Because the state changed the rules after I got involved. And the city that I'm involved with, I mean, I really love Albion, that's why we picked Albion. We can't get any help from Albion. I've been coming begging for this change. And I can't get any help to do that. I don't know how many more months we're going to subsidize this, because I can't, can't afford it, quite frankly. And I don't think anybody could blame me if I'm losing 20,000, 30,000, or 40,000 dollars a month, which is what's going on right now. The number of medical marijuana cards are declining. People aren't way back and renewing them. I didn't even mind, because there was no point in it. I didn't have to. Other people have this thing about tying their name to a part that says marijuana. I never had that issue, because I was doing it for the right reason. But some people do have that. If we can't get adult use, we will go bankrupt. No question about it. No dispensers will survive on medical alone. No one will open a medical-only dispensary, not now. There's too much adult use to handle. Albion will not get the benefits we wanted to provide. They won't get the appointment. We've already dropped 22 employees before. And that's always so that I don't have to close the door tomorrow. And there'll be no contributions to your park system or your kids, which is what we told, we told the city we were going to do. I can't, I can't let this happen. You, you can't let this happen. I need your help. Whether you like marijuana or you don't like marijuana, it's a really big business in the state of Michigan. All, all the states have it. There's a, there's a bill right now coming through the Senate in Washington to change the classification of marijuana. That's going to change the whole thing upside down again. Because it's no longer going to be a class-one drug. It's going to be like taking an asthma. It's going to change, everything's going to change. If you don't allow us to become an adult-use dispensary, if you don't allow us to add adult use to what we have, and we have the ability to do that and track it separate, you have the systems to do it, they have to be tracked separate. Laura makes it track, track separate. Those people with cards will go. What you'll find is that your inventory of medical only will shrink, because that's what's going on in every single dispensary that was dual-purpose, ironically. I'm begging you to let this project work. We know how to run businesses. We know how to make things work. We can't do it with two hands tied behind our back. We need this now. We're starting, this is going to be bankrupt very soon. If anybody would like to ask me a question, if not, I will cuss off my knees. And I'll get out of your way. Thank you for listening to me. I hope you folks understand that we're desperate right now. We're desperate to keep the business open, but even more so, you know, when we started the project in Albion, it was, it was going to be an employer, and it was going to do good things for the city. Forget the tax revenue, you know, the tax revenue was going to be great. The licensing fees were going to be great. It's not me, it's not my company. Anybody trying to go into that spot or any other spot in this city will not be successful medical alone. They've opened the doors for a while, but they'll be gone. Thanks for your time, appreciate it. If you have a chance, please go through the book. I need some help pretty quick.
Any questions, wherever you're ready. Alright, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, so next we have Linda Colman in. The floor is yours, Linda Colman.
Thank you. Linda Colman in 105 Irving. And I have happy news to report to all of you, that after COVID delay and I had the rain, where I thought I was going to have to build an ark, we are finally going to have our Coke sign yet started with restoration. So, and I applaud all of your patience, as a community, as a council, as everyone in Albion. You've received, I believe, Anne, who has been invaluable to us, has, did you receive something that looked like this? Okay, picture this as green, it didn't come out as green, but picture it as a classy green. And what we're asking is that you allow us, we have the permit, you know, replied appropriately, apparently, from the government. And we are going to place it in the park and then unveil it at Festival of Forks at 11:30 at a formal dedication of our Coke sign and plaque. And the plaque will explain why we have this wonderful, very unique sign over the river. And I will, I'm happy to report as Councilwoman, Clark, yes, I knew that, Councilwoman Clark will attest, she asked us if I knew about the history of Coke, and yes, I do, Coca-Cola tries to keep it quiet. But then our sign was in that canyon after they took the cocaine out of Coca-Cola. So we can feel good about that part. Anyway, I'm delighted to invite all of you personally. You'll see more about it, but I hope you will approve the plaque. As someone stands and looks at the beautiful, beautiful, bright colors on the sign, they'll be able to look at the plaque and understand why this is important to our community. And the more I've read about it, the more we know about our sign, it is very unique, just like our community. So, thank you. Any questions, anyone else? Thank you again for all of your community support. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have DJ.
Victoria.
Victoria, I'm sorry, and Jason over there, who, the vision?
Good evening, I hope everyone is well. Before we get started talking about the Welcome Home Organization, I'd like to introduce myself and my husband to the community. Because we have continuously sent emails to the city council, the mayor's office, the city manager's office, attempting to communicate the work that we're doing in the community. So I just want to make sure that we introduce myself and my husband. I'm Victoria, this is Jason. We relocated here to Albion a little over a year ago. We made Albion our forever home. We felt that it was a diverse place to be. We were unable to buy a home in Jackson, where my husband is originally from, due to some racism and prejudice of where they wanted us to live. We currently live on Cram Lane. We bought the old Kermish to the house, which we love. We truly believe that brought us here. We prayed about coming here, and we prayed about bringing our nonprofit here. Unfortunately, we have been hit with lack of communication from city leaders, lack of willingness to work together, for some reason, and and transparency. I'm going to tell you, we are utterly disappointed in our new community because of this. I'm not really sure how we, how you want to revamp and revitalize a community when you don't welcome the people to it that want to be here. We are homebuyers, we are taxpayers.
I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to, we have to go to, we talked about home, that, so.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that. Yep, yep, yep. But first, I needed to introduce us because we have gotten a lot of feedback about, well, nobody knows you. So that's why no one is dealing with you. So it's important that I introduce ourselves to you before we get started. So, talking about the Welcome Home Organization, we are a veteran rant, 501(c)(3). We, our director is a disabled baby veteran. Her and I both have over 40 years with the Department of Defense. My husband, who is the outreach and advocacy director, is the superintendent for burrow golf club in Parma. We run many programs here over the last year that my husband's going to go in about. We have a lot of partnerships with United Way of Jackson, MSU Extension, Spring Arbor University with their golf program. And we feel that we bring a lot here, and we would love to collaborate and coordinate with other city leaders of nonprofits, yourselves, just to bring more to the community. I'm going to turn it over to my husband to talk about our programs that we currently have.
Thank you. My name is Jason Alvermeyer. As my wife Victoria said, I am the director of the outreach and advocacy program of the Welcome Home Organization. We are running, it's called the M West Youth Initiative, it is based off of something very personal to us. It's named after Michaela West. We have two programs that stem from that. They are the Golf Garth Stewart Skills Camp. It is a golf camp for youth, and we have the Brandon Hildendorf Bowling Skills Academy at University of Williams. We offer etiquette, sportsmanship, we offer food. What we need is transportation. Right now, we have 30 kids approximately in our camps. And I, I believe with some transportation, we could probably touch around 70. We sent 24 youth bowlers to their first junior tournament. We had our own little club. Out of, out of those 20 kids, we had five of the top seven with the champion. And coming from my background as a retired semi-professional bowler, this community needs that bowling alley, and they, these kids need that bowling alley. And we, I'm really struggling getting in touch with parents to have their kids show up there on Saturdays or Thursdays when we offer these programs with tutoring and mentoring, and like I said, we feed them. The bowling, bowling is, is really taken back off. In the late 90s, it, it, it kind of, kind of, kind of settled down a little bit, but, but now high school bowling and college bowling are really, really picking up steam. And they're offering scholarships, athletic scholarships to college from high school teams. And, and we can really, really have a program here in Albion, and we could really impact a lot of these different communities that, that are in, in Albion, and these kids are hungry. They, they want, they want something better for themselves. And it's very important to me with my background to be able to give them that. And, and, and so that's why I am here personally, is that I ask for some transportation help. I, I honestly think that we can, we can, we can really have a solid positive impact on, on these children. I, I have access to, I mean, my, my friends stop by all the time. They're, they're they're all Americans, they're under-19 world champions, they're PBA professional title holders. I mean, I, I know I know so many people who will help build this program. We just need the kids, and, and with that, we need transportation. And that, and that is, is why I'm here.
So happy to hear that you're doing that. My dad was one of the first founders of Albion to start black people bowling in this area. When we moved here in the 50s, there was, at that time, black people weren't bowling here, they were bowling in Jackson. And he did it real simply. He just took a petition, had people sign, made a commitment, and had them bowl. From that, he went into having a bowling league for children. Maybe some of some of you guys did, but I might be, because I was his daughter. But, and it went for years and years and years, and that was one of the things that the city did provide. When he was doing that, they helped him with a bus, and he had a chauffeur's license. And he drove all the way around town, took the kids, took them bowling, and took them back home. And those lanes were filled from lane one to twenty, one every Saturday. And I will say, it, it was very productive. They gave the kids something to do, you know, other than just sitting home doing nothing. And although they've got games now, but it's still, I've noticed when I go out there, there, there's families out there a lot with children that are bowling and stuff. So I think that's something that, you know, if other council members agree, then maybe we should look into and see if we can support it.
We would greatly appreciate that. Over 200 scholarships go in awarded each year for, for bowling and golf. Over two hundred scholarships go in awarded each year for bowling and golf. We have, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Didn't we just pass something saying that nonprofits could use our transportation?
That would be awesome if we could get an email back to let us know. We will come here. We have drivers. We will pay for the gas even. I mean, we do a lot of fundraising. We, or we try to in the city of Albion, but we've come across some challenges with that as well. But that's okay, we'll get through that. Currently, we have girls who golf that will be every Wednesday at Borough Golf Club at nine thirty AM. We provide the students with food for lunch every day. That comes out of our nonprofit. So we are recruiting young women to come and work with coaches, guest coaches, and as well as this Spring Arbor University girls golf coach. So we're really offering these youth opportunities and not just learning to golf in the park, but learning to golf at a golf course, learning etiquette, learning, you know, what their next step could be. You know, some of these kids maybe not, may not go to college, but if they come to our program and they win, they earn money. That goes into an account for them, which they get when they graduate from high school. What that can do is either take it to college, they'll get a, they'll get a check cut for them. They can take that to apply to college tuition or expenses, or they can take it and get into a trades program. So it's up to them. So it's a lot of benefits to this program. We also have our skills camp. We actually have a Thursday night adult youth bowling league that's at University Lanes at six PM on Thursdays. And you would be amazed that, I mean, even though we have some parents that drop their kids off, we have guest adults that come in to bowl with these kids. And they will buy them pizza and they will pay for them to bowl. Shoes, I mean, we have adults that their kids are grown and they just want to come and work with the youth. So, you know, we, we ask that you please promote and share. And we ask that if there's any possible way for the city council to perhaps get some planning together so that we can work with the other nonprofits. We get a lot of calls from parents about other programs, from Ms. Jackson's program, from Mr. Barnes' program, baseball. And if we could just put together a calendar for parents so that these kids have something to do every day and know that they have it to do, I think is half the battle. So I would just like and ask the city council to, if you could put something together where the nonprofits and community leaders could come together and just maybe have a quarterly discussion on the activities that we're offering. You know, this is not a competition. We're not in competition for these children. These children need us. We're here for them. We didn't move to Albion because we thought it was just an awesome place. We prayed to move here to work with these kids. Like I said, we're a veteran organization. We work with veterans, we work with families in need, you know. So I sent you guys also our flyers. Hopefully you can, you know, put them on your site or share them. We would appreciate it. I just want to cover just one other thing that we're doing. We actually have a step program. This is.
The step program, Success to Every Parole League. It's for returning citizens coming out of prison, felons. Maybe they don't have ID, maybe they don't have clothes, transportation, bus passes, whatever, housing. We have an MOU right now with the MDOC. We have five mentors and five mentees. It's kind of like a big brother, big sister type thing. They talk once a week. Our biggest challenge is to assure the people coming out of prison that we're not the cops, that they can trust what we say, what they say to us and vice versa. It's not a go-between between what they're going through on that day to the MDOC. It's more of just a support system, you know, like a big brothers, big sisters thing, how to keep this person from not drinking that day or how to keep this person from not using drugs of their choice on that day and vice versa. Or if they're just having, you know, a rough day.
And we also offer a tech workshop for, for the reentry candidates. We also have a safe program, which is success for all veterans everywhere, which we kind of do the same thing, a mentorship program along with helping other resources find new jobs. So you could check us out on Facebook, the Welcome Home Organization, Albion slash Jackson, or vision.org.
Yeah, I would suggest too that you go visit some of the churches because that, because I know at one time I was talking to the owners of the bowling alley and we were talking about forming a Christian league. And a lot of the pastors are very much interested. I would suggest that you visit some of the churches.
We will definitely do that. Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. So are you guys known as Welcome Home Organization or Who Vision? Which one would you be listed under for your high ninety filing every year?
Oh, it's the Welcome Home Organization. Yeah, and you can pull us up. I've worked with over four hundred nonprofits with my personal business, Five Doms Consulting. So I.
And you're hopped out of Jackson?
I'm sorry.
Are you hopped out of Jackson?
No, we're, we are here in Albion and Jackson. We have two addresses. We also have a bowling program in Nashville, Tennessee. We reach across the states. So we are also have a bowling program that is initiated in Flint. We also have a arts program in Columbus, Ohio. We are all around and, but this is our home and this is where we want to do a lot of our work.
Okay, so are you a national organization or are you just a local or affiliate of a national organization?
No, we are a local organization. We are here, but we are working to get additional programs.
Okay. And then I was wondering, you said you sent us little flyers with that, what was in our packet? Or did you send us an email? Because one of the things I noticed tonight is that you've been sending, you've been trying to communicate with us.
Yeah, I have.
Who would the emails be coming from?
The Welcome Home Organization. My husband has sent multiple emails.
So.
We were told that you thought they were spam and they may have been deleted and whatnot, so.
Because I looked for Welcome Home in my inbox anticipating tonight because I've heard about you before, but I could not find an email.
It says, our email is thewhovision2020@gmail.com. And you can find us on, we're registered. We have our letter of exemption. We are registered with the state of Michigan and have our AID number. And we are backed up by the United Way. We have partnership with United Way of Jackson as well.
Yes, Councilwoman, thank you very much. And thank you both for taking the time to come out tonight and give your stories face to face. I can empathize with the struggle that you're having and really appreciate that you wanted to make sure that we have this information. In terms of coordination and collaboration, I just want you to be encouraged that that is something that we are aware of and, you know, working through the capacity issues that a city has at the, at the state that we're in right now. So I just wanted to thank you and to be encouraged in terms of us at the city being able to coordinate things, but also to see that coordination happening. And it seems like you are taking the lead and asking for that. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that I appreciate it and I know I appreciate you too.
Well, we thank you and we thank you for your time. I mean, I just, we just hope that we can all work together and do everything we can. We, we have no platform to stand on. We're only here today because we just need to introduce ourselves and what our goals are for our community. You know, we're here, we are citizens, and I know that we're new. But how do you keep a city revitalized if you don't bring in people that are willing to have a tax base that's willing to work in it?
It's not showing up. It really isn't showing up in our emails.
Yes, ma'am.
We have, we have issues.
Thank you both.
Thank you, guys. Both of you, both of you guys coming in here.
I just want to say one more thing. We do, we are qualified for federal grants. We do file for federal grants. And we are willing to work with other nonprofits to put in those funding lines to support us all, so.
I'd like to comment. So at this time, if we have anybody in the gallery that would like to speak on an agenda item, we can have an opportunity to come forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi. Every shower is eight oh five that I was driving, talking about the recreational marijuana. I'm still against it. And I'm still against it, and I'm still against it. I don't think that we need this here in Albion, a small community. Albion has children. And I know you say that it's a certain age group that buy it. But let me tell you, we can get anything we want, no matter what age we are. And I don't think that this community, this small community, need recreational marijuana. You're driving under the influence of marijuana. You're doing a job under the influence of marijuana. You're having conflicts under influence. We already have problems at one conflict. We'll need this here if you go buy you a joint or buy marijuana. Then you have a confrontation with somebody, then a gun come out. Then the police is involved. I don't think we need recreational marijuana here. So I'm asking you all to think about it again and think about it again. I know what the man said, but I don't care about that. I care about our community, I care about our children, I care about us in Albion. And I don't think that we need it. And I would still say we don't need it, and I'm an advocate against it. And I'm asking that child to consider our people, consider our children, consider people who won't be able to get a job. I know they say that growing the marijuana, they ain't gonna have a drug test. But other people are having drug tests and they will be able to have no job. And then we're just saying Albion's gonna do what? No, I don't think we need that. So I'm asking you all to consider that, think about it, and don't let it come through. Don't let it come through. It would devastate our town. We already have a problem, issue. If you want to bring money into this community, let's come together and see what we can do besides recreational marijuana. I'm willing to be on the committee that we can try to get together and what we can bring money into this town. But recreational marijuana, uh-uh. I'm against it. And every time you have a forum, I'm gonna come up here and say, no, no, don't take it in. No, don't accept it. No, do not let it come in Albion. No. Maybe somebody else will be able to do above the marijuana. But there are some people that cannot rise above that marijuana. Rise above a drug, rise above this here thing. And I don't care who don't like it. I'm always saying, don't bring the recreational marijuana into Albion. Please, don't. I look at each and every one of you out. Don't, don't, don't accept it and don't let it come in. Please, don't.
Hi. Excuse me, I'm Brooke Malik. I'm the manager at Sunny's. I also sit on the state board for provisioning centers. And I just wanted to say a few things to, just to clarify. If we're not recreational, they will just either turn to the streets or go to another community. We work with the police department and we have cameras inside and outside and they have access to those cameras at any time, at all times that they want it. So we're always working with them. And then the crash that happened was not due to the influence because somebody was under the influence of marijuana. So I just wanted to say a few things. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mark Zelinski. I'm with Greenwood Biomedical Districtals. We're located at nine oh two Burstein in the Albion Industrial Park. I'd like to comment on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh six, which would modify adult use licenses for cultivation and processing facilities from twenty down to ten. We very much appreciate the opportunity to operate our businesses here in Albion. From the start, we've been committed to the city. And we prioritize Albion businesses for our required needs and are proud to say we've supported over a dozen businesses here to date, from engineering, electrical, hotels, to pizza, because I like pizza. Nevertheless, when we could not locate a business in Albion, we then looked to the surrounding communities and expanded outward. Today, we've infused thousands of dollars into the local economy, which ultimately will contribute to more jobs. We will encourage our employees to do the same. Again, creating more jobs within the city and the surrounding cities. A little bit about marijuana jobs. It's a misconception that marijuana cultivation and processing jobs are mediums. These jobs not only require physical labor, but also intellectual tasks like data analysis, seed to sale tracking, scheduling, and other specific operations. Employees will work both independently and as a team, building valuable long-term skills in a positive and challenging work environment. These are quality jobs coming into the city. The current medical marijuana market demand has decreased and that is forecasted to continue. There's legislation at the federal level now to legalize marijuana. Entrepreneurs and investors now face construction increases of thirty to thirty-five percent, higher labor rates, and funding has become more difficult to acquire. These factors equate to higher startup costs, operating costs, and more risk in a market that will not be able to support it long-term. Looking at a cultivation or processing facility from the street aesthetically, they look the same. There's no difference between them. Whether they're operating under a medical or adult use license has no effect on track. Albion now has the power and the opportunity to create a promising economic path that hasn't been seen for decades. Allowing quality jobs in the marijuana industry to come in will ultimately create jobs in local businesses, the benefactors being the city and its citizens. Jobs not only in the marijuana sector, but also in the local businesses. So thank you again for your time and thank you for the opportunity to come to Albion. We're excited to get going and start operating and we're on that doorstep. So thank you.
I have a motion to approve the consent items. That would include our July sixth session meeting, our sign permit for the Coca-Cola sign at Frenos Park, the assembly permit for the Albion big reunion. So. Yes. Waller. Yes. Lemire. Yes. Williamson.
Yes.
R. Reid.
Yes.
And Mary Jane.
Yes.
So I have a motion to approve the resolution for the project agreement with the Mission and Parkland National.
So need support.
Yes, I agree with your statement. Yes, thank you there. And so as councilors are aware, back in January, we submitted a grant application to conduct a feasibility study on the either repair of the maintenance of the five dams in Victor Harbor and the potential removal of all of our dams. Happy to note our grant application was approved and awarded in equal. Approved as submitted in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars with an eighteen percent local match, which comes out to twenty-three thousand one hundred from the city. Please note, this will not take place until twenty twenty-two, so we do have time to work this into next year's budget. But our city attorney has reviewed this project agreement and we are just directly approving approvals and we can move forward with completing that grant process.
Good question, yes. City clerk, sorry. Councilman Clark. Okay. Along with the dams being, are they going to clean with us?
Yes, it'll all be, we'll look into like the removal. We'll have to do something with the sanitation, the rocks, the sand. All of that will have to either be removed, cleaned up. So yes, they will be looking at all of this with this.
They'll have a lot of trees and things that are down there.
If there are located around the dams, yes. But if other parts of the river, no, that doesn't pertain to this, right? This is solely for the dams and the Victor Park. But this will include the sea wall and all of that, just how would removal impact that infrastructure as well?
Yes, Councilwoman. So we are here to remove the dams?
No, this is just, we're just approving to accept this project agreement to work with the study to look into what would happen if we did remove them or what would it take to just repair and make them up to hold them.
Thank you. I guess what concerns me is with DNR, the fish beds in the rivers around the trees and things. So if you remove the dams, does it increase the amount of water that comes down the river?
At this time, I don't know, but that's what the study will look into and determine what will happen if we do remove it. What will our water levels be? What will happen to the natural? What will happen to the natural life that lives within the river? Like I said, the sedentation, the sand, the rocks, everything, we will have to do something with that. So we don't know right now, but this is what this feasibility study will provide answers.
Okay, because that's that's what I'd like to know. Because if if it gets to the point of where it's going to affect fish activity in in the rivers, then they're not going to let you remove anything out of it. So that's what I was wondering.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Just to confirm in terms of the feasibility study, at the end of this, will we know the requirement cost for removal, keeping, et cetera?
Yes, this will, this is the first piece that we have to complete to kind of give us that information. So yes, we will have, we'll know the numbers for both. And if we want to make a large investment to repair our dams or if we want to make, want to make another large investment to remove them. Keep in mind that the grant funding that is currently out there is for removal. They're not really offering much grant or resources for maintenance and upkeep of dams. They are kind of cleaning up slowly across the state. As y'all were correctly, last year, they had the large dam failure in Midland. So they are looking to really kind of move away from dams and VPNs. So this will kind of give us the answer, the information you need to make that, make that determination for our community.
Thank you. I just have one more question regarding the timeline. You mentioned that the cost would be in next year's budget. Is the actual study able to take place immediately?
It's not. They have to actually do these at a certain time of the year. So they have scheduled to begin at the beginning, take place early at the start of next year to be complete by October 2022.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you click me up? Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Le knew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. In our package, we have an amendment to our ordinance for authorized marijuana establishment, the grow licenses. Correct, Congress?
You need a motion, I'm sorry.
Okay. So a motion?
So.
Second.
Yeah, so what you have before you is, was directed to draft an ordinance that modifies the current number of authorized licenses for marijuana establishments. The current number is at 10. This ordinance would amend that down to, I'm sorry, the current number is 20. This ordinance would amend that down to 10. Currently, I think we only have four, five approved. So we don't need to lose any on the adult use side by attrition. Assuming the council approves this, I'll bring another ordinance before council regarding the medical side. Medical side of 20 are utilized, so we'll have to lose some of those by attrition. But that's going to require a modification of a couple of ordinances. But what you have before you just modifies the four longer licenses for growing process from 20 down to 10.
Yes.
Just a question from my understanding, when we talk about this, this is just for the recreational side. You're adding the medical side that I don't think we actually talked about. So why, why would we do this with medical side when always, what's the point? Did someone on council ask for that as well?
I I thought, I recall a discussion regarding if we did it on the medical side, we would have to lose it. But losing by attrition, we had a discussion regarding that. Unless seniority setting in on me, which is, I am turning 40.
From what I understand, the last conference you had, it felt recreational, reducing it from 20 to 10 and not touching the policy.
You don't have, you don't have to do with medical. I just, I assume you recall a discussion about that. If I'm mistaken, then I'm mistaken. What you have before you just addresses adult use.
And it leaves six, it leaves six available.
Five, I'm sorry.
Five, leaves five available. So that means this would leave the opportunity for five more licenses to be procured legally through the city.
Correct.
Yes, Councilwoman Lawler.
And we currently have five?
Five are, you, so the last meeting, we had the council authorized five licenses that were issued. So I believe one business. Uh, I'm forgetting the name.
BRT.
BRT. It holds five licenses and that would leave five available up for tracks.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Is there any information from that development corporation about how many might be being pursued? Or if there are any talks for redevelopment? I would hate to know that there's seven in the works right now under our current policy. And somehow we would run into some legal situation. Uh, if we reduce fees and we're already, part of the city is already acting to seek to pursue licenses.
I don't have that information, but I am aware that there are several. I'd have to double check it again. But my understanding is there are several medical licenses that are held and those facilities are not actually in operation. So I'm getting a nod from the clerk, so I believe that's.
But that's not recreational.
Oh, well, I'm not, I'm not aware of any, and I certainly don't have any applications.
Yeah, it's that pretty lengthy process to make it all that. Yes, Councilwoman Lawler.
So, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so coming, talk to us from a legal perspective. If we take this down to 10, and you say we have five out of the use, right?
Correct.
We take this down to maybe not 10, maybe the five we got. I'm just speaking crazy. But what if, what if we say, we just want these five that we got, and that's it?
You can do that.
What does the legal perspective look like?
The MRTMA allows a local municipality to enact an ordinance to limit the number of tour facilities within its jurisdiction. So if you do five and those five are taken, then that is certainly within your right. You can, you can limit the number.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Sure.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So I asked you to know if there's something about pending that in process.
There, there are no applications currently pending.
As of this day?
Correct.
That we know of.
Correct.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I, I'm curious about the number five. I was going to keep saying that, but there were only three approved agenda that I'm looking at from last week. Unless there's more diverse, what they have?
There, some of them had multiple licenses. So one was like a grow and a process.
Okay.
And so you're correct, there were three agenda items, but there were five total licenses that were approved in those three agendas.
Um, I will continue to be in favor of bringing it down to 10. I'd like to leave the door open for business to continue to happen for growing and processing. Um, so while I support my council members' desire to decrease the amount from 20, um, I would like to leave some on the table for other businesses that may want to come to our Gusher Park and be successful. So, um, that is what I would continue to say about this.
And I would just say to council, I mean, you, you can always opt at a future date to add more licenses. I mean, now is probably the opportune moment if you want to reduce because now all the licenses are used, so you don't have to lose them by attrition. If, you know, six months from now, a year from now, you decide you want to add more, much easier to add more than to take them away once they're utilized. So you always have that option to amend this and add them back, should the council choose.
Any other options, Council?
Yes.
For, I would choose to amend it to five. How do you want to, you make a motion to revise your motion? Does it amend it to five?
Support. Any other questions, Congress?
I strongly would encourage casting an amendment that was limited to, limited to five, but thankfully it's not new business here. Deal.
City clerk, I'm getting her. So first we got, yeah, so, um, what we're voting on is the amendment.
So take it to five and then back, depending on your, your case, your next vote.
Councilmember Le knew?
Yes.
Williamson?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. So then my next vote is, um.
So that is to modify the ordinance so that it only reads five. Now your next vote is to approve the ordinance as a whole. Hypothetically, you have to process. So the other thing the council should consider, because you're going to five, is if you were to get applications between now and the effective date of your ordinance, um, which is September 2nd, the current ordinance is still in place until September 2nd. So, um, the way you would have to address that is you would have to deem this an emergency ordinance so that it is effective upon publication after first reading. And you would need to adopt it by kind of super majority vote of five votes.
So we're looking at after the first, after?
So what you had, okay, so let me, I'm sorry, let me, let me break this down. So you have an ordinance before you're ready. You just voted to amend it to five.
Correct.
Okay. However, the way our process works is you have the first reading, the second reading, and then effective date about 30 days after that. So your effective date of your current ordinance is September 2nd. Hypothetically, you could have facilities apply for a license before September 2nd, and we would have to process those because the current ordinance is in place until September 2nd. So the only way to get, to get around that is you would have to deem it an emergency ordinance and such that it could be adopted with one reading upon publication and basically be effective immediately. And the order, the emergency would have to be to, for it to take place to avoid having any applications be processed before the effective date of the ordinance.
Is there any criteria you have interested in that, I just wondered?
Not that I'm aware of. Our charter is silent on it. It basically just says, you know, in the event of an emergency ordinance. I mean, I can tell you, to my knowledge, the only other time we've done it as an emergency ordinance was when the state changed the regulations on fireworks. And it happened very, very close in time to the 4th of July. And so the city deemed it an emergency ordinance to have those regulations in place before the 4th. So no, there's no criteria, but that's going to make time with my 10 years with the city that I believe we've ever done it as an emergency.
But then there's no true ramifications if it's done as an emergency.
Um, hypothetically, it could always be challenged, but I don't know that it would be successful. Does questions for?
Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So you said if we have an emergency change in our ordinance, that after the first reading, we can make it say effectively, or by the, yeah.
So what you would have to do is you would have to declare this ordinance an emergency ordinance. So the basis of the emergency would be used to be effective before you receive any other applications. In declaring an emergency ordinance, you only have to have one reading, and it's effective upon publication.
Well, how long is your case to do first reading?
Tonight is your first reading. And so it would be effective, I don't know, as soon as state, I defer to the clerk as to our first date of publication. But it's probably, we think, I think that's good, the publication Thursday, according to clerk.
And I, I would say, I, I would say I'm inclined to let the process that we normally follow kind of unfold, only because I don't, it just seems like an emergency for this, isn't that warranted? But I don't want to be in a situation where we're in a stupid situation because we did this in haste. I don't think this is an emergency situation. This is my opinion. I say if we vote on this for the five, we allow us to go through the regular process. So, Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I would like to just say that we take it down to five and we declare it as an emergency because we only want the five. So how can we say we only want five when if more applications come in, we want to do?
But we don't know what our qualifications could be if we do this as an emergency. Councilwoman, if you have something to say.
I, I'm just trying to figure out what's, what's the emergency. Um, and, and if we arbitrarily decide that, that stopping licenses from being applied for, for recreational use is emergency, we could pretty much decide anything for emergency. We need to hurry up and close. We need to sell a building. We need to, any number of things that the city could do. Um, while the charter does not define what an emergency is, I think all of us have a good idea of what an emergency is. The house is on fire, the water main is broken. Um, there is a serious legal issue looming. I would encourage you, if you are going to move forward, to follow the process that we normally follow and to not run afoul of that.
So because of the discussion that was held the last time, and how it was suggested that we might be in a suit situation. I can understand why some of the other council members, just to bring clarification, is thinking of this more as an emergency because they don't want to be put in a situation where we say that we only want five and then somebody rests an application in or they're at the end of their process and then they get into our building. And then, uh, this legal has to process it. And we said that we only want five and now in fact six. And with the, um, the legal part of it, like he said, I understood perfectly, that would be up to the courts. We're trying to avoid the courts.
Yes, it's correct.
So here's what I would suggest to council. You know, like, like we've discussed, the charter is silent, what constitutes an emergency. And in the last decade, we're going to use a provision clause. If the council is going to go the normal two readings effective date in September, then I would recommend changing, reconsidering the vote on five and changing it to 10 to allow for, in case you get additional applications. Because otherwise, if you put, if you do two readings and only have the five, you're likely to get those other applications. And then we're going to have to modify the ordinance again to lose those facilities by attrition, which is going to get a little bit messy in terms of your, so that would be my suggestion. If you're going to do the two readings effective date of September 2nd, I will reconsider to go back to 10 because otherwise we're going to have to lose them by attrition. Which means, and, and when I say lose by attrition, that means basically when a business stops operating, it loses a license and that license ceases to exist. And you slowly go down to your ideal.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I move to use the language of an emergency in order to prevent the possibility of any further damage being caused by this tactic and move forward as we are moving.
Any more?
So then the language, the ordinance would need to be modified. I mean, the language that I would suggest then is follows. It's, we would add a line to say that the city council declares this ordinance to be an emergency. And then, uh, we would probably just add that right before where it says section two. And then the line that reads the ordinance shall take effect on September 2nd will be replaced with language that says this ordinance shall have, take immediate effect after publication.
I'm just going to point out to my colleagues and council that in many of our precincts, more of their residents voted for the legalization of marijuana than voted for you, myself included. So tonight, as you decide to de-marijuana, growing and processing licenses is an emergency, remember that the emergency will be in your court come election time with the residents. And you have to explain to them that you did not fulfill their wishes. There were plenty of compromises put on the table, not only for tonight, but at the last two meetings. And if I sound frustrated, it's because I am. Compromises haven't offered. People have tried to work across the two different sides of the aisle on this particular issue. You are going to deem this an emergency. You are gonna deem this an emergency and that is effective in state. You're now saying we can arbitrarily just declare anything an emergency. I think you should follow the attorney's second option, which was to put it back to ten to safeguard from any legal action. And to prevent from licensing becoming frustrating with the power. I, I admit that I know I'm outnumbered at the moment, but it needed to be said. That more people in Alvin voted for the legalization of recreational marijuana than voted for any of us sitting at the seat. I do.
See with the votes.
So you have to, you have to vote on Councilwoman LeNue's. Her, her, her motion to amend first. And my suggestion would be, and I'll defer to Councilwoman LeNue is to. Use the language that indicated the council.
What was that? Wasn't that Councilwoman Clark's motion to, to do it as an emergency? No, that was a, that was another. So do I have support?
Support.
Councilmember Williamson?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
LeNue?
Yes.
And Mayor Stanger?
No.
So next, we have discussion of park supervision.
When immigration, did we just vote on making it an emergency and not actually voting on the implementation of the. Ordinance itself? Correct. Give one more vote.
So we have that as an emergency. And this vote is.
Actually made by.
So it is an two five.
Right, so. Yes, this, this includes your, your modification that it's five, includes your modification. That it's going to be an emergency ordinance. So now under overall vote, because this is an emergency ordinance, requires five votes to enact it immediately.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reeve?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
LeNue?
Yes.
Williamson?
No.
And Mayor Stanger?
No.
Oh amended the sentence over.
Discussion on park supervision, Councilwoman. Okay.
I was reading the Battle Creek newspaper where there was an article put in there about Alvin and I was. I, I was trying to find out who put the article in there about Alvin because. It was telling about the things that have been happening in the parks and I really wanted to know. How these people found out different stuff that they have put in there, but our parks are in need of some type of supervision, they're in need of. Of someone being there and I would say not all day, but in the evening parks because there's a, there is some. Badness, things being torn up, uh junk being just, I, I, I watched some people eat. Out there in the park the other day and just really didn't clean up behind themselves. Some, some of the stuff they put in the trash can, others was just poo on the ground. And I think that we've got to find some way to keep our parks cleaner than, than what they are. I mean. Parks are for families, but where you've got the children's play stuff and, and. Again, I think that needs to be checked and because there's some, I found some shrooms on the ground that had came out of some pieces. And so that needs to be checked. I know that Harry Longham was here. He checked them about every three times in, in the summertime, but. I, I really think that there's something that's got to be done with our parks now to, to keep things from being torn up. Cause we don't have the money to replace it. We don't have the money to buy new stuff. So we need to get, get something that will help us keep it as well as we. I took my granddaughters out to uh Victory Park too. And out there, it was, it was a lot of junk everywhere and I, you know, I, I've heard that. The people who work with the parks department talk about how bathrooms are being messed up and torn up and stuff like that. In some kind of way, there's got to be somebody who can. Be around to double check to make sure that things are not being destroyed. Or, or find out whoever it's destroying and, and have them. Do something about, at least replace it or, or be fine for it or something. I think that we need to uh. Have, well, in fact, uh. Kip and I talked once about a policing in the park, not really a policing, but just somebody to monitor what's going on there to. To keep it safe and we'll have money to fix it if it gets torn up. So so that, that'll keep it together.
So are you looking at having like pass law enforcement? Are you looking at cameras or?
We could even have cameras. If you had cameras, at least you could see who was doing what. I, I would say the. She, can you talk about that?
Okay.
Um I think we discussed this at the previous council meeting. I believe that's where the article came from about a creepy fire. Um if you recall, Director Miller did come at the last council meeting, shared that we are experiencing high levels of vandalism within the park restrooms. Where we have full stop stalls because they need repair and we go out and some are just dedicated in there and smeared it all over the facility. It's no one's job to come and clean up feces. Um as the state is making, it takes a village. I think it takes a village to make sure our community looks nice. So if you are renting out a park space, take it upon yourself to clean up after you're done using it. Uh we do have our parks should go out and empty the trash and whatnot, but we've experienced um residents coming and dumping their trash in our um waste. And um garbage cans, yes, in our park spaces. So. It takes, it falls on all of us. We need to take pride in our community. We need to take pride in our park spaces. We have um the new county parks. We are receiving more funds to put into our, our space, but then they turn around and just are destroyed after we do that. It kind of, it's, it defeats the purpose. Um so that was probably where the article came from because we did talk about that. We are looking into the cost of putting. Um cameras because the new irrigation system we um installed it on the park right after it was installed, we went out and someone flipped the wires. So it, it's set to come on automatically. It, it does not happen. So we have already had to have a service, I think, a couple of times now. So. It falls on us to make sure that we take pride in our park spaces and in our community and do what we can to make sure that it looks.
I talked with uh one of the guys that was working in our, and he said it was a reporter from Battle Creek. Cause she was asking, she was asking him about the parks and, and that they had been told that our parks were. Been a complete mess. And then at that time, he was in Holland and he told her, no, this park was not in a complete mess, but you know. Holland is having problems too.
Just, just for information for counsel, I mean, one of the other municipalities that I worked in, uh C D Rapids, that's. Had a great deal of success um deterring and prosecuting um damage to the parks through use of surveillance cameras. They've. They've caught several individuals that have damaged park property, including the surveillance cameras themselves. Uh I actually had a kid try to rip a surveillance camera off the top of the building and caught a real nice shot of his face. When he did it. So um you know, I defer to Chief Kip that it has to uh. Public safety's. Uh you know, ability to monitor a system like that because every department's different, but I will say that the camera system in Rapids has been very successful.
Well, usually the, those camera systems are recorded and it's not necessarily monitoring them. It's a matter of having the information to go back and look for it at a later date. Uh some of the damage to the bathrooms would be difficult because obviously you can't put cameras inside of bathrooms. Um but um. The remoteness of the parks in some situations makes it difficult uh in order to have cameras in certain areas. We're gonna have to have internet in those areas. Have internet in those areas. That's a much greater cost that we're gonna have to pay for. Um it, it can get expensive, but we can definitely look into doing it. It's just how many we can do in, in the cost and whether it's beneficial for that. So. But I'm all for it if we can find money.
When I was out to, to Holland, I think I told you about this at last meeting, the young man had one of the kiosks around his hill. And he was just jerking it like this, trying to, it, it didn't move, but he was trying his best to, to tear it off and I've seen them. Actually take rocks and spray them. And even though that material was made not to damage, you can see some marks in there. And, and so there's, there is things that are being done that, that uh that you can see. I, I, you know, as I'm out there doing stuff and I'm, I'm looking around, you can actually see, just like I told you, walking on top of the tables. Jumping along the, the rock that, that big thing there that, that's got the history of, of the fire plant. All of that. And it would be nice to know who was doing that. I saw who was doing it and that's when I mentioned to him about. The folks who want to talk about putting cameras out here. And if they see you, they're gonna report this to your mother and the boys jumped out and went off. You know, so that is a deterrent. Uh if they know that there's cameras, there's one.
Well, we've had several more serious incidents in the past that I would love to have cameras there for, so.
And I guess in the meantime, since we are now all starting to have our precinct meetings, that can be a topic of conversation like. Do we have volunteers who are willing to kind of. Be present out of the parks to deter these type of behaviors? Um it would take a very strong person because as you know, it's just like somebody of bad behavior that you didn't know. So. You have to be willing to have that confrontation. So I mean, in the meantime, if we can bring her out, if we have the money. For cameras, if we have the money for any of that providing and figure out a way to have a solution, you know, maybe as volunteers and we're in the numbers.
I, I mean, once uh we had, had talked about, I don't know who it was that I was talking about with the Alvin fellows, but. The Alvin fellows uh doing some time out there in, in the park, like maybe on Fridays and Saturdays. Something like that because it, when school is back in, you're not gonna see them out there as much, not in the winter, but in the spring.
So are we good with that discussion?
Yes, Councilwoman. Um I, I just wanted to know that you mentioned the town halls and how there's probably a lot of different ways and places that we can use cameras in our city and. Just thinking about putting this cost to scale and really making the investment we need to be proactive, I think is, is going to be essential. Part of what I'm planning to share. Um I also uh just kind of like cringe inside thinking about um. I mean, literally Trayvon Martin and how with someone who was assigned to patrol a neighborhood um to, to use lethal force. So I just want to be very careful when we're thinking about having volunteers and, and what, you know, what else we can do in that situation.
Yes, Councilwoman. I'm sorry.
I think the supervision was probably better because we got. So I mean, it, it'll be more control. And so I think that's one way that we, that we could possibly. Put down uh vandalism and things like that. So just wanted to make us aware that we do have.
I know back. Okay, I don't want nobody to laugh. But back when I was growing up, a long time ago, they had. Where the back bathroom is, there used to be. You could go there and get ping pong, the, the paddles were ping, or playing ping pong because they had. Down in the back of the basketball court, there was a table there where you could do that. And you could, I mean, you could. They, you'd go get the paddles and then you had to return them. And basketball, you could get a basketball and then you had to return it, you know, and things like that. It's, it's just. Stuck in parks are not cheap, not cheap at all. When you see a park out, out in the park, I bet you somebody paid over twenty-five thousand dollars. Just for a, a, a baby swing thing because some things are very expensive. And when they get tore up. And then the parks are sitting there looking raggedy and unkept. That's okay. And I would rather not have a park for the C one that's sitting there and disarrayed. And, and stuff hanging all over everywhere and everything. So if we had somebody who could do that and not be a policeman. But just be there so that, you know, people know that you're there and you can get different things to play with from them, you know. Uh Chief Kip was telling me about the, the, what is it, tennis tables? That they got outdoor ping pong tables. Now that would be good to have there. And if there was somebody there to give them paddles, maybe even show them how to do it. Something I give, it would be an interaction that would be positive rather than negative. So.
Forget on this discussion, folks? Is Director Miller, was he gonna talk to us about the matches? Did you have a, sir, I know you asked for the sun.
I guess it's the last portion of that, or the one that they put down. That was, I mean, the reason that I asked about this because people are coming in to know basically what is taking place and then also. We know um he does do a lot of catchings. We know about the rain, we know about a lot of things, but also we have never heard him talk about committing larynx. And larynx is done in certain areas. I just wanted to see if it could be also done in four years than just.
If I can just answer that. Um our superintendent of uh. Public services had, that position was open since, um it became vacant back in January, end of December. So we just recently brought on Kevin O'Brien, who's our new superintendent over. Um public services or public works. Um so do we have now someone um directly on working in responsible for streets, parks and cemeteries? Um I have, after attending precinct four and five, um precincting, there was a lot of concerns about the conditions of our streets. So I have issued. A memo to both Director Miller and Superintendent O'Brien. Um we, I know that we are working on a potential possible additional local street knowledge. Um but in the meantime, we do need to come up with a plan to address the conditions of our road. As when we. Um laid out those options, we said it would be about twenty years of, you know, within the knowledge for the C truly all of our roads would get. And so they are working to um. Develop a plan to address the, um finishing of our streets. In the meantime, until we can um. Reunite a different, a disparate source of funding to help us address. So we are working to develop a plan. Once that has been available, I'll, I'll be to. Share with all council or we can bring it back as um. A future item for everyone to.
Councilwoman Jackson, do you have any comments?
No, I, I mean, you know, it was just, it also, like I always say, put it on YouTube, people will watch. I mean, when people listen and get to hear what she's saying about. Development of a plan. Cause out of another plan. It's been an ongoing, long process.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you, Senator Gander and Senator Snyder. It's, I'm very glad to know um a plan will be developed. And I just wanted to um. Further add that from the town hall, there are a lot of people who are willing to support the city in immediate um. The immediate repair of our, our needs related to the road limits. Um. So, so just to keep that in mind as, as the directors develop that plan, that um. Helping residents know what they can do and, and what they should not be doing. Like, uh you're right, I'm sure there's a lot of people who are ready to just go fill in the road. So being able to make that explicitly clear in the plan, I think will also be very helpful.
Right. Are you discussing on the stewardship cleanup equipment? Councilwoman, this debate.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um I was out um cleaning off the top of the doors because I thought it was gonna rain or like seven days. Midtown precinct and I um tried to do the best that I could with the debris that was covering them. Uh while I was out doing that, I found at least um five to seven doors that were filled with dirt up to the top. Um so. Um so what I asked, like the reason why I asked for this um to be put on our agenda is because I wanted to know about the back truck. Okay, it says the back truck should last us till twenty twenty seven. I'm I'm just wondering. It can't just um all of a sudden happen. This has to be like years and years of dirt just building up. So, oh, sorry, um. I know we have one. Are we saving it for just water main breaks or are we cleaning out our sewers? We're saving it for water main breaks and I don't know. We need to do something about it. As I got um to reading this, it said that um. It seems like our director is asking for help. He's basically asking for more people to hire. And he is saying that uh he wishes that we will reach and state the lead pickup. So do we have anything um? Any money where we can hire some people or is the council willing to um? Not or, but any, is the council willing to try to have our city manager reach out and talk to Ranger about um? Doing our lead pickup. Just trying to come up with some suggestions. Like I said, up up here, our director asking for more hands and for the lead pickup to come back.
So I mean, it it the reason why Ranger had been involved was for the regular pickup of the lawn service. But I think what Director Miller was talking about when the city of Alvin did the lawn for the leaf pickup. So that wouldn't be something that Ranger would do. You know how everybody would break them out to the road and then our city would go through a full domain service and pick them up. So that would be a Ranger thing that would have to go back to.
City.
Yeah, okay. So again, manpower and hours and pay for that, you know. I don't know if that's the nature. The city manager, Senator, you want to?
Yes, I can understand. I believe to the high level cost, that's why they moved away from the annual lead pickup. And I I just think people are still stuck in their race to when it's that time, they break their leaves to go to the road and leave them and let them blow around. And that's why they get rushed down our sewer drains and then do better. So we do have to take it upon ourselves to bag and put all of our yard waste bins and containers that Ranger does provide to us and we can put our additional bags. But if we continue to keep pushing them, it's just a void of our sewers. It's gonna add more work um to our heavily stressed department. But yeah, that is why we moved away from the high level cost.
And that that causes, as you know, council, a lot of the flooding in the roads when you have the heavy rains. So I mean, people in the neighborhoods just may be hesitant that you just can't push your leaves to the road. Because that's just gonna cause issues down the road.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Okay, I understand what she's saying because I'm gonna be very honest with you. In riding Alvin and just looking, there's a definite difference of what goes on on this side rather than what goes on on this side. And even in the in the fall time when people are are doing their leaves and backing their leaves up. There's still leaves falling from all trees on on the on the street. And those are getting then moved into the the uh sewer things and stuff like that. And just like I was saying about over on my side in the second precinct. We hadn't had a street cleaner coming through there in three years. And and when it did come through and it went around, a lot of the leaves that were just stuck there from not being cleaned in so long. Did get stuck on top of the the leaves. I went out around mine and kind of moved them off myself. But there's there's some things that just really need to be taken care of.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I'm kind of gonna pick that up of uh. Councilmember Reed, all of the leaves, we can't just sit here and blame our resident. Because the leaves fall off the trees naturally. So of course, some of them are going to get in the street. We still, our sweet streets cleaner comes, put them down our drain. We still need something to get them off the side. And asking residents to keep their um. To keep that street uh in front of their houses clean, I would not recommend that because I've been there and I've got to what you got for. So I'm trying to tell you I don't do it, but anyway. So back to the matter at hand, the the uh the equipment to clean off the sewer. What do what do I have to do to get my sewers clean without having no dirt in them?
But I just as a statement, Superintendent Mr. O'Brien has recently written bottom of the board. So this is the area that he is directly solely responsible for. So share your concerns with us that we can develop a plan to better clean out and catch bases and eliminate this issue.
Thank you. So I think um when we were talking about this, maybe about. A month or so ago and he was bringing some things forward and he was talking in front, we also had talked about. Um additional hiring additional people and I think I posed the question at that time for him to bring that to council. How many people did he need to hire, if I'm correct, um to be able to get these things done? And you know, he's saying that he needs people, but he's still not sending a member for him. So I think that's important.
Thank you, Mayor Senator. I'm curious if anyone in this room knows what the city has done to require me in knowledge this change. Um in order to ensure that residents know what's now required of them. This, I'm just curious, what has the city done to ensure that residents are aware that this has now changed? I know that things go out in our water goes. I'm just curious of what the city has done to ensure that residents are aware. And then and then the bottom two is just considering that there are weird sparkle leaves. Councilmember Reed has helped me see the layers of of what's there. So there's a combination of things, I think, and I'm just curious what the city has done to. Ensure that the the residents are aware to prevent this going forward.
So you mean like, well, we're citizens made aware that we're no longer doing the citywide lead pickup or?
And did they announce what needs into the street?
Well, how many years have it been since we've done the citywide lead pickup?
It's been quite, the old contract was in place for three years and we just renewed it last year. So it's our second contract renewal or contract renewal with Ranger. So it's been in place for some time now.
It's been more than three years since we've done the citywide.
My my question is, what has the city done to actually notify people?
It wasn't more than three because that came on council when they stopped doing it.
The first contract was three years, which expired last year or definitely just renewed for two years.
Okay, so I have this really great flyer I got from Ranger. About what I need to do because I'm a, because Ranger picks up our garbage and our leaves that are long wasted. And it says what you can't do, what you can't do. And I've gotten at least three of them over the last several years. Um actually directly mailed to my house. It wasn't by any sort of request. Um in fact, it didn't even come in a city of Alvin envelope from what I remember. Um but it but basically every address that I got, I saw my neighbors had them as well. Um it says, pick up your leaves, place them in the bags, put them next to the road. Make sure you're not putting um certain types of brush in your um in your bin for your for your refuse. I mean, outside of providing people that information for the last couple of years, I guess I'm struggling with what do we need to do? To remind people to pick up their leaves and they pick them up until late November and then they start picking them up again in late March. So um I remember this one time in council, Jeanette Spicer, she's like, you'll take my twelve bags that I saved from after we did the last one? And they said, of course, we'll do that. They've done this at public meetings. They sent out flyers. Um if you're particularly naughty like I was once and put something that was supposed to be recycling in my um into my refuse thing. Um you get a nice little polite, not so polite, get that out of there, you're in trouble. Um so having broken rules a few times over the last couple of years with our provider, I know that I get told to fix that. Or we have issues. And then if I don't respond to it, I had the unfortunate pleasure of receiving code enforcement letter. Let me know that I will be getting a fine. So I guess I'm I'm sure, I I applaud everyone at council for trying to figure out. I know that there are backups and there are things like even my basement backed up and I feel like I try not to put the leaves down it. Um so I applaud the effort and I wonder to what extent some of this now is common knowledge. And as council people and as city officials, we just continue to remind people, make sure you pick up your leaves. Make sure you use the brown paper bags. They're available at the, they're available at the dollar store and they're available at um capture supply. Um and family fair. So um with barring going and picking up brown paper bags for everybody, I'm not sure what else we could be asking people to do. Um so that that's that's my two cents here. Of course, it probably doesn't mean, doesn't even worth that. Um but I think that um we're debating about something that is, there are going to be people who continue to not do it. Um and I think we just need to recognize that and start enforcing it as um Councilmember Clark and I have talked about since we both have come on council. The importance of code enforcement and making sure that people understand the rules and how um to take care of their issues. And so I would continue to go back to that. That is the one mechanism that we can do, use to get citizens to be better stewards of their property, of the streets and of our sewers.
So, Councilwoman, was that what you were talking about?
I I really appreciate that, Jake. Thank you, Councilmember Reed, and thank you. I I wasn't critiquing what has happened. I was trying to inventory it to understand because it hasn't been effective. And so we have to do other things to reach residents. And I think this goes back to um the need to put things in multiple formats. And to reach people through town halls and roadworks door and recognize that there are people who don't read. There are people who don't have um the same skill sets that we do and and those people are deserving of assistance. And we also have a significant elderly population. So I think um making sure not only people are knowledgeable of court enforcement, but they have support in getting those leads. Is an ongoing thing that that we do have to um take into account as the officials of our city.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I think I'm very well what she's saying and and because I've talked to people and people have said, you know, well, I I do my leaves. And and so I'm not gonna do those in the street because those are the streets, the streets leaves, you know. And and they did. They said those are the streets leaves and and I pay taxes and the city is supposed to do their job because I'm doing my job, which is their yard. You know, and so if I think that if the city expects people to do things, then they should. Send out something to let them know. Everybody does not even lose paper, but put it in a in a wire bill or 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 something to let them know what's their responsibility.
So I can believe for those of you watching via YouTube, that brought up on our city's website Ranger's information. Uh that we picked up. But I know that doesn't address the concern that Councilwoman Reed had brought up, like folks. Who might not have the other leisure read or have internet. You know, definitely if this is something that you all feel like would be a topic again to bring up in your precinct meetings. I would highly encourage you um so that people can hear you say, do not put your leaves in the road. We have Ranger to pick up. And hopefully, hopefully, the the problem is like, you know, by talking, letting people know verbally instead of expecting them to read.
So um can I also add that if there are specific requests for how to generate information out of folks? For example, I um went at the union coded when we had to go to these virtual meetings. I expressed a lot of. A disdain for how we were handling hearing and hear folks because people couldn't hear because of our equipment. Um but I was very specific about that. I was like, let's fix the microphones and get the right systems that people can hear. So if people can't read and people are maybe blind or whatever they need, if there's a specific thing that needs to happen to start making things more accessible to people. Well, let's just be clear about it and get it to city administration so they can address it. So if it's bradal for those who cannot see. Um if it is visual um diagram of what can go into a recycling bin and what can go into it, those are very easy fixes. And if we give the city administration a chance, they can do that. Um so I would, so I would highly encourage that if if you feel that there is a gap in some sort of accessibility issue as it relates to city information, let's get that to city administration. And let them let them do the work of trying to figure it out for us.
And I'm sure like even Ranger would probably be very happy to get us those flyers that we were talking about if you wanted to get them to your precinct meetings. Um they can those out and so that people are aware.
Again, we are working, I've been told about a city guidebook that has was released years back. We are in the process of creating a updated version of that book. Um and we would like to leave for different ordinances that we receive questions about people have that they're unsure of or we see the most violations of. So trash reviews, that is one that will be included. I mean, we're looking to have two options, a hard copy, that's an actual physical book that you can stop down and pick up. And then as well as an electronic copy that then everything is hybrid. So we are in the process of working that and that will be released here in the very near future.
Right, anything else on this topic, folks? I think that's the discussion.
Right, so we have a discussion of a playground, place and the street. I was coming down um. Last Tuesday and a little boy and girl was playing on the basketball rim that was right in the tree. And so as I'm coming down, I see them running back and forth. So I slowed way down. And I get to a point where the little boy stuck his hand out like that for me to stop. So I just stopped. And so he did his little tick tock dance and then he uh made other gestures and then he went off. But then he kept bouncing his ball and it just kept rolling back in the street. So I did not want to get in a confrontation with the parents. So I came down and I got off. And we went back. I introduced myself. I asked the kids to go get their moms and beds and they did. A gentleman came over from the other house to find out what was wrong and he went and got one of the moms. And so in talking with the the parents, they felt that it was an okay thing for a while. And and so they were, they were saying, well, we know there's a, and I said, there's cars that come up and down the street. And they were telling me about cars that fly up and down Melrose Street. And what we needed to do about it. And I told them, I said, well, one thing, your child does not need to be playing basketball out in the street with the rim out in the street. Okay, and so I I was not gonna argue and the officer and I, we stood there and we listened to what they had to say. And then I just said to them, this is very unsafe. I've been to funerals of kids, little kids. And it's not fun to see a child in a casket. And so I just politely said to the parents, I'm gonna call the protective service in the morning. And I'm gonna see what they think about your child playing basketball in a rim in the street. And then the gentleman who owned the rim came home. And he, the one of the fathers had kicked the rim up and set it back up in in the in the guy's yard. Then they took the rim, then then when the guy came home, he took the rim and put it back out in the street. And he said, I said, it's my rim. I can put it where I want to. And so I told him, I said, yes, sir, you can. And and I did. I told him, I said, I'm gonna check with the council to see what they think about your rim in the street. And so he said to me that he had been told by by our public safety that the rim could be in the street. So anyway, I haven't seen the rim in the street after then because I did call protective service and I did report it. And I did call uh uh. The prosecutor's office to find out that that was something that was, could be done here in in the town. And they didn't think that it should be. Protective service that that they were going to check uh checking into it. So I don't know if they did or not, but I have not seen the rim in the street anymore.
So uh Councilwoman Reed contacted my office regarding this and actually I spoke with the chief about it. You know, and the and the chief actually reminded me, this this probably dates the chief and dates me a little bit, but it reminded, reminded us of the. The moving wings world where they're playing hockey in the street. About every thirty seconds, they yell, car. Move their gnats out of the road and then go back and start playing again, you know, and I think in years past. Kids were a little bit more understanding of the need to get out of the street. Maybe that's not the case anymore, but. So there's, there's two things here. One, um the the state and and the city by adoption of the more, the state's modern vehicle code has. Already on the books, an offense that's called impeding traffic. So whether it's somebody impeding traffic with their physical body or something that they place in the street. Um we can prosecute them for that. Now, aside from that, um Councilwoman Reed had also asked me to look to see if any other municipalities had. Uh ordinances like this. I wasn't able to find any.
uh, ordinances like this. I wasn't able to find any on my own, but I did reach out to the Michigan Association Municipal Attorney. Southfield City Attorney sent me what is in your package, um, because they apparently had this issue in Southfield. Now, I will preface that actually didn't end up adopting the ordinance, but this was the ordinance that they had brought to the council. Basically, it just says you can't put basketball poles, hoops, backboards, portable hockey nets, or any kind of sporting equipment in the street, which I think makes sense. I mean, it's it, it is probably a dangerous thing. Um, but so that's the sample that you have before you. It's, it's from Southfield. Um, if the council is so inclined, um, we could adopt something similar, uh, if, if the council directs me to draft such an ordinance based on this. Al- alternatively, um, to the extent possible, I mean, our public safety department can, can take enforcement action, um, under the, the impeding traffic statute that we've adopted by ordinance.
Council question.
I know. When we were doing the checking the polls from the neighborhood for the ones where there are any lights to let the people know. I had attached a annotation in that email, kind of put it in there because I had been contacted by somebody that had been um, on that street about that same thing, about that um, basketball hoop being out there. So I drove to see how often it was out there. And sometimes they would leave it. And after the person that complained, they moved it for a day and then they put it back. Um, so they do move it, you know, often though, but I think they don't understand the seriousness of what they're putting their kid, you know, in jeopardy of having that thing out there in the street. Let them play basketball. People just take one down. And um, I think it's something that I've seen around not just, you know, my master's degree. So I think that's someone we need to look at. Councilor, these children were seven years old. Mrs. Craig had also talked with me about her car. And the, because the gentleman, he didn't take it out and not, he didn't put it back up in his yard at nighttime. He did, he left it out. She got, in her car, got bumped by or she accidentally bumped it because it was out in the street. Now, I don't know. It, it just really bothers me when, when it's kids involved. And I really think that we need an ordinance to where adults do not put kids in the street. So that's why I asked them, how do I do this? Or what do you have to do to help them?
So are you asking, yes, to have an ordinance in this place?
No, it's just a discussion. I guess just basically looking for the, the general consensus from council if they are interested in such ordinance. I'd be happy to draft one if they are.
Yes, council member.
I am just in general in that favor of restricting more things for kids and families. I would support enforcing what the state of Michigan has and what we get locally about St. Louis. But again, um, if I'm the minority council, I completely understand. I would hate to be the council that kind of continues to like add more rules and regulations that could potentially hurt families and um, kids. I understand the concern about kids in the street and public safety being informed, but also sometimes the local house with the basketball hoop or the, uh, the um, football is the place where kids go to play. Um, and if they're playing and doing that at someone's house, they're in a neighborhood, they're not doing anything, they're tedious. Um, so gen- in general, um, I would support whatever the majority council is willing to do. But as a, as a general statement for me, I would like to be less restrictive with how we uh, interact with children and families in the community.
So council member Reed, was there not like a driveway in the neighborhood?
That's it. This side had a nice long driveway. And I asked, I said, you can put your hoop up there in your driveway and let him play there. He said, I can leave it out there in the street. Okay, the parents also that lived across the street, one of the little boys lived at the corner of, of Austin and Mallory. One lived across the street in Mallory. And I pointed out to both of them, you have driveways. I have a driveway and I have a hoop in my driveway for my grandchildren's playroom. And that's what I said to them. And they're saying, when I'm coming down Mallory Street and he puts up his hand for me to stop and then he does a tick tock dance out there and then he goes back all the bouncing his ball in the street, you know, I could have gotten upset about that, but I didn't because it was a child. And kids do that. But it's not safe. What if it had been somebody coming? And you, you've got Mallable Park down here. Uh, you're coming off Austin Avenue right there where Mallable Park is, with people coming around, coming right on up, going up to Lincolnshire or to the uh, Brockville Street uh, homes. And not paying attention. And you, and you've got kids out in the street places. That is just not safe.
I mean, so kind of going back to this precinct means, I think that again, that would be a great topic of conversation for your precinct and if you feel like you have.
I'm driving, I drive all of Albiain Street. I deliver food boxes to seniors. And so that's where I was going from. I was delivering my food boxes to the seniors. And I'm coming down in Albiain Street, which does not have to be in my precinct for me to be concerned.
Councilor, in fact, that your precinct, yeah.
I, I, I guess what I would offer councils, I'm, I'm, either way, I'm happy to draft the ordinance. I mean, and the council can vote it up, vote it down. It's a very short ordinance. It won't take me very long. So I mean, I, I guess I'm happy to do it unless the council feels otherwise. Because then you can vote it up, vote it down, do whatever. Won't take me long to draft.
Yes, we have a question. So the ordinance is, um, that you gave us to look at is from Southfield, correct?
Correct.
So are they, do they actually put up a new ordinance or do they have their controls?
This is, this is the ordinance that their city attorney drafted for their council, their council request, but they did not actually adopt it.
Okay, alright. So is there a way that she, you could help us out more than just putting up an ordinance thing? Can you talk this, fire is, um, sure, our, our enforcing the law. And because you know, they do say that we just need to put a whole bunch of ordinance in and we don't even, we don't even um, basically go with the ones that we already have.
Right. So in this situation, do you'd like the officer for a ten year old to get?
Not saying a ten year old. What would you, what would, what would your prescription be if we, you know, a ten year old was in the street playing basketball or?
Well, if they're impeding traffic, we ask them to make sure they don't impede traffic. Beyond that, the only option is to write a ticket. So I don't know. I mean, the enforcement part of this is the citation goes to the person committing the offense. Not, I can't enforce it on a parent because the parent doesn't necessarily know what the child is doing. That's why I, that's my concern with this.
See, and this is what I said and I. This is what I said to the parent. I said, okay, if somebody comes around that corner and it's your child, whose fault is it? Is it your fault? Is it your child's fault? Is it the boy's? The guy who got, whose hoop it is or the person driving the car? Now, you're going to allow your child to play out in the street when somebody hits him and kills him? You want to blame him for?
So I'm, I'm going to throw out here an example that I deal with every fall and I love my neighborhood. Um, we bought our house in my neighborhood because of the protest. We're right by, we're between the furniture apartments, we're between the twin, uh, Mitchell Towers at Eldian College. The fraternities are just a couple blocks over, um, the band field, back on practice field. So every August, we hear the Britons fire up the trumpets. Um, and then of course, uh, the students who are eighteen to twenty-two are loud, they're rowdy, they have a good time. There's homecoming, there's parties and fraternities. How the heck there's parties in the residence halls. Um, one of the things, um, that I learned growing up here in Eldian from many of you sitting at the table, sometimes you just gotta, you know, speak up and say when something's wrong. And so, you know, when a house student is doing something that isn't really appropriate in my front yard at a certain hour of the night, I'm not ready to walk out and say, hey, get moving, you know. You got a place to go. You probably don't need to wander here. Um, so when, and growing up in Eldian, I had several of my, what I would consider elders or parent, parent types. Say, what are you doing over here? Are you supposed to be over here and checking in? I mean, this is a neighborhood and community building thing. I think if we want to continue to legislate and start, you know, enforcing tickets on kids. And I, I think it's one thing to say, hey, are you supposed to be in the road and ask people to move along and get out of your way so that you can get through because they shouldn't be in the road. Uh, and then it's quite another to say, we need an officer up here right now to get these kids out of the road. It just, it's kind of like a get off my lawn ordinance, you know. And if we could all just be a little bit more polite and start communicating in our communities about what we like or what we don't like or what's going on that's not appropriate. I think it would be better than trying to get the city to expend resources, precious resources into um, legislating certain types of actions on the police or having people enforce things that we really couldn't enforce by having a conversation with our neighbor. So um, that's what I'm hearing tonight and that's what I'm offering up to you. It wasn't anything for me when I was seven or eight playing outside with my friends to for the neighbor to be like, are you supposed to be outside tonight? Or it's the streetlights have finally come on. Are you supposed to be out here? Um, or hey, get out the road. I'm trying to get my car in my driveway. So um, I just want to be careful about how we're spending our time here at council and then how we're also allocating city resources. And maybe this is more of a conversation to have than our precincts or to have with organizations who work with children or community about how we can encourage better uh, behavior or following the rules. I'm not necessarily in favor of, you know, trying to legislate uh, tactics and tickets on kids and things. We all.
Alright, any other discussion? Discussion on code enforcement and other resources to address the residents' concerns. So I think kind of city managers, right, kind of touched upon the tackle. Yeah, yeah. So the council member New wanted to bring this up.
Yeah, yeah. And, and uh, clearly it seems like a current topic today. Um, just, I, I don't know if it's ironic, it's nettles and different, but um, it came up a lot in our town hall that people feel like our city is not what it was. Um, and there's just a growing number of concerns in residents. I didn't sense a feeling of um, ability to address the concerns. And so I'm, I'm like questioning recognizing that the city has a number of constraints, what we can do for the city of Albiain to really meet residents' needs. And how can the skill set among council members facilitate that ability to really ease the load on the city while also allowing residents to really feel a sense of ownership in their neighborhood, um, to respectfully and lawfully um, seek ways to address their concerns. There were a range of concerns, everything from um, you know, dog poop in people's lawns getting very disrespected to litter, to dumping, to the concerns about the um, granger. And I, I recognize that uh, we will have a city guidebook. Um, and I, I know that this is um, something to me personally, I thought that we needed to say to allow people to know that they were heard and that there are a number of things that are happening. Um, and then to continue to open the, the conversation with regard to what we can really do to collaborate with the city staff, uh, council members and residents to resolve the, the issues that we're having. Um, I don't think it is uh, exciting more resources than policing necessarily. I think that there's a lot that we can do to collaborate. And so I would like to um, receive, I guess, a more specific timeline in terms of some of the support um, in, in that guidebook, whether it's a one-page document. Like, I can imagine, I recall that the city has been working on a guidebook for many years and I, I would like to just see a one-page document speaking to some of these issues. And I think that would be a lot more accessible for people to print off themselves and be able to provide, um, and, and then more cost efficient for the city as well. So I'm just curious, what we can expect to receive something like that to support the residents?
Similar to what I said with the resident guide, with the ordinance I sent out to all departments, because I know they don't obviously call for residents or deal with issues regarding the ordinance that we have in place. So I've asked for feedback on which what are our problem or our hot topic ordinance is. Um, once we, once we have received that information, we can release that in a one pager before the official guide is released. Um, but I'm not trying to drag your feet, but if we're going to release a, a true actual resident guide, we want to make sure that we have all of the um, pertinent information. I don't want to keep on, here's a review of our edit number one, here's a new release or edit number two release. So we are just making sure that we are covering our bases and making sure that we have all of the um, really important information that our residents need to have. But once I received our most important ordinance that we have put together a one-page file that we can release for, before the actual official guide is available.
Thank you. I, I was asked to bring this topic up specific to animals in our neighborhood. So I just wanted throw that out there. I know we have a friends of Albiain's animals, but we still do have issues related to the way in which uh, we are feeding animals and what that attracts in terms of larger animals. Um, I, I think that that is probably something that um, it, I mean, I don't know if it's changing the ordinance, uh, working more closely with the friends of Albiain's animals who's clearly dedicated to that topic, but it seems to be a little bit misled. But I just wanted to uh, bring that forward because that's what I was requested to do and seeing if anyone else had other things that they were being hearing about, being asked to attend to and if anyone had obvious facts.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So do we have the ordinance about putting uh, hoop outside right for our pets? Or yes, we do.
Well, it's not, I believe it has due to feral, feeding, feeding random cats. Not necessarily your own cats, but uh, let me pull it up. We did, we did put in um, an ordinance prohibiting feeding like stray cats or feral cats unless it's part of a spay trap neuter program.
So if I have an outside cat, now for the school outside on every day, no one ever is going to probably attract other animals. Do we have something in place?
So what our ordinance says is, it says, no person shall place food outdoors or maintain placement of food outdoors unless the food is located inside a proper enclosure that is inaccessible to at-large animals. Additionally, no person shall knowingly feed an animal that he or she does not own. Um, but then doesn't, that doesn't apply if you have permission from the animal's owner, if you are participating in a city-approved spay-trap neuter return program or bird feeders are also examples. So you can put food outside for your, if you have an animal, but it just can't be accessible to other animals.
Is there a pass at that?
Uh, a violation of section fourteen dash eight is a civil infraction.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any other comments?
But I have, I have one more. I have related to the animals. It was the treatment of animals. Um, and so I mean, this to me is, is an ongoing chronic issue. Um, this is something I've received complaints about over a period of time. So this was me raising awareness, bringing that to the council um, to see if this is something that's happening in other precincts. And then um, continue to inform, because some of the recommendations I received are kind of like how we do multiple meetings. This is my way of bringing attention to this topic. Um, and seeing if um, there are other people who are dealing with this in, in the precincts.
Do you mean like neglect or?
Yes. And nuisance, animals, um, excessive bargaining.
And they're reading, they're just whoops. I was out going doors the other day. I mean, I had at least three dollars.
I mean, we do have incidents for dogs running at large and, I mean, I wouldn't say it's our, uh, citation that we get the most, but we do get citations from public safety when it's reported. I mean, I can probably count on one hand the number we've had this year, but I mean, we do, we do see them on occasion when uh, people call. Usually it's, it's something along the lines of the cat was running at large and it, I don't want to necessarily attack somebody, but it's maybe acting in a menacing manner towards somebody. And so then public safety gets called and they generally will issue a ticket for dog running at large.
But that, that's usually when we can identify an owner. We do have a lot of dogs in the community that we can identify owners of and we can't catch them either. We have no way of catching them. We can't get close enough to them to catch them. So, um, we do that problem as well. Uh, when I first started working here, we had a tranquilizer gun that we utilized, but we can no longer get the drugs for it anymore. And it's actually impossible to do that. And not even the, the county goes charged with animal enforcement has one. So um, if, if we can't get close enough to them, we can't catch them.
So even if we catch them, where do we take them? And being told that we can't, over there in the yard.
When being told that we can't, over there in the room.
No, when we catch them, they go to Urban Avenue Animal Hospital and the, the county, county animal control picks them up and takes them to the human society at that point.
Do you need to speak on cats, though?
Get, with cats, they will not take cats. Um, the humane society won't take them and, uh, animal control will not pick them up from us. If we do take them. Um, the only time I think the humane society will take cats is if they're actually, um, well, they're, if, if they're, uh, what was it? The, the, the family wants to give them up for adoption or something because they can't afford to keep them or they can't keep them for some reason. But just for us to pick them up, they will take them.
And then, and then I just wanted to thank you all for allowing this discussion. And I think this is part of the reason why. I know one of our goals is to have regular town hall meetings. Um, I think that there are issues that affect everybody and, and being able to hear the residents from us, they know that the concerns are being heard. And then we have to hear from residents. All of that is very important. So I just appreciate having this discussion tonight.
Okay, so, um, next is our, um, parks and recreation survey results. So as we are embarking on our five-year parks and recreation plan, um, we did a survey of the community and we actually had a hundred and fourteen responses. So that is a good number in comparison to some other surveys that have been done. Um, and we had in your packets the results of the survey. So definitely this is a big starting point for our committee that is working towards our comprehensive plan. Um, so definitely this is going to be information utilized as we're putting together what can we do better, what can we provide, um, and just figure out how we can ultimately utilize the resources that are going to be coming in. So, um, just wanted to allow to have the results as well so that you can see what community members are saying, um, what they want to see. Um, and also there's comments in here about what we've been doing well. So I think it's, um, some good information to work with. Yes, Mayor Clinton Jackson.
Yes, so who was on that meeting?
It is our parks, um, if I, our recreation advisory commission. So you are a member of that as well. Um, I sent the results out to our commission. We were just trying to determine the date everyone's scheduled right now with some of our kind of parts. We are looking to have a meeting. So we will discuss these results and then we need to discuss the second form of public engagement that we do with the public. Um, we will be working with Wyman and Associates, who is our engineer firm that we have a service agreement in place with to help us finalize the updating of our master plan. Remember, remind me, we'll be, um, releasing the RFP for the community engagement specialists to bring on boards that they will be able to help us with that second form of engagement. There was a delay in that. Um, if you're aware, there was an RFP just recently released for the comprehensive plan. So we have decided to delay, just do a two-week um, delay between the two, just to avoid any potential confusion from the consultants who will be explaining this for that. So we will be releasing that this week. Um, so yeah, that is our parks and recreation advisory. Who's going to run this update process?
And, yes.
So there was also another survey done at the same time when it did the one about, um, police force. Um, did all the council members get a copy of that one?
Me from the N L A C P?
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I wasn't in the place that the test that they only have one.
So, no, the.
I have the only reason why I got the, the only reason that I checked. The only reason why I got the perk that went to the, about the perks is because I requested it. And somebody sent it to me. The first initial one, yes.
Also, the policing one we got.
The police one we got, the one about the perks was not submitted.
But that wasn't initially available when they had.
But you guys had it, right?
I've seen it. I bet that wasn't in the N L A C P, yeah.
What we think of that, you guys do.
Which survey was that?
So the N L A C P did two separate surveys. One was on policing, one was on parks. And so they had, uh, police results.
We all have the police one.
We all have the police one.
Yeah, the police one we're going to get the one with the park, yeah. I remember the police one.
So, um, the next we have the discussion approval to waive the park preservation fee for difference makers of the council, the mayor of Clinton Jackson.
Yes, um, I was asking for, um, that to be waived due to being basically a public, a public, a public engagement when we do invite everyone to come out and see everything that difference makers, kind of, it's the time that we also even ask you to come out and present different awards. And then also we have other constituents from our community come out and see what the children have done throughout the, um, summer. And I guess also that they also told them that when we were out there last year, the other city manager and the mayor did allow us to be out there free because it wasn't a corporate organization.
Any questions?
Just for clarity, um, when it comes to voting, um, I'm asking, um, is there any issue with, uh, Councilwoman Jackson voting on this? She should just see business for her organization. I just want to, I want to protect you from that. So I just want to ask, I want to make sure before that there's no question.
So the way that our charter, our three council rules redo, if, if Councilwoman Jackson has a direct or indirect financial conflict of interest should have to mandatorily, um, abstain from voting if the rest of council, if, if there isn't a direct or indirect conflict of interest, if the rest of council deems that there's some other conflict, their main members of council would have to vote to excuse it from, from this vote.
So, are you going to motion?
So I, I guess it depends on Councilwoman Jackson. She believes she has a financial conflict of interest. She had to state to the council that she has a financial, an indirect or direct financial conflict of interest. And that's why she's abstaining from voting. No further action needs to be taken by the council at that time. If however, there's some other conflict of interest that remains, the council would need to excuse it. If there's no conflict of interest, then nothing needs to happen.
Well, I'll just say that there, I have a blind end show so that there's nothing, it can be said that was their fault.
Yeah, so city clerk. So.
Ooh, motion that's supported.
Look, she doesn't have this thing before, you know, have to.
But it's not for discussion approval. So someone means, there needs to be a motion second.
So, a motion to approve, uh, label the fee for those. Okay, so a motion is second. The council member, Park, yes. Reed, yes. Jackson.
They would.
I see you say abstain.
Abstain.
Lawler.
No.
Lenu.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, and. Right, you guys, uh, senior mayor's right or what?
Don't be a dumb, uh, council member, let me ask to have the discussion.
Oh, good job, good job. Thank you, so you represent, mayor said. So, again, another topic that was to me very serious concerning the safety of our neighborhoods, of our children. When we are speeding cars, uh, racing through our residential neighborhoods. Um, the complaint was made specifically to Marion Street, but since then, I've heard complaints of people who have called the police and not gotten any responses in terms of, um, their concerns related to speeding cars documented and, and not being addressed. So I am moving to request that our, uh, public safety provide us with a plan in terms of how to reduce speed and increase the safety of our neighborhoods related to speeding cars within this week so that we have time to process that before our next meeting. And we are showing that this is a serious concern that we're addressing.
So, appropriate ways.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll wait for the second on that.
Oh.
Second.
Well, I think you just said, is this a discussion there or discussion?
This is a discussion, I can just say there should.
Oh, okay.
You get told to take action, not to have a discussion.
You didn't add it for action.
Was there, yeah.
I, I mean hypothetically, the council could add it for action, but you'd have to move to a mapping agenda.
So just for, for minor purposes, that should have stayed discussion and approval of reducing speed when I introduce that at the meeting, I need.
If you want to take action on it, yes.
Wow, thank you.
So, Kika, do you want to speak up?
I mean, I was at the meeting and I heard there, there are concerns and I realized there's other concerns around the community. Um, I already addressed it with the officers and, and requested, um, that they step up some of their enforcement actions when it comes to traffic enforcement. Uh, to give you an example, last week we made ninety-five traffic stops in comparison to about a quarter of that in previous four weeks each. And so the amount of traffic enforcement has been stepped up substantially. Um, I made twelve traffic stops myself out on Michigan Avenue for speeding. Um, just to sit out there and see what was going on and slow people down. Um, I was out there about six hours total. And so with twelve traffic stops, I'm seeing about one speeding car every half an hour. Um, one of the biggest problems that we have on residential streets, um, to give an example, I sat on Urban Avenue for an hour between one-thirty and two-thirty in the afternoon. I saw five cars and not a single car was going up the speed limit. Um, officers don't have that kind of time. They can't sit there for hours and hours and hours and wait for that car that comes down there that speeds at that time. Um, and so if you're having specific problems on residential streets, I need to know when that's happening. The closer you can get me to the times that it's occurring, the better enforcement we can do. I've worked with some residents. Um, they give me the description of the car, the time it comes through and use it, they're going to work or something. Um, we've stopped the car within two or three days at that point and taking care of the problem. But um, I need to know those specific times for these residential streets that don't have a lot of traffic because officers just don't have the time to cover fifty-three miles of roads when there's only two or three of them doing it. So.
Councilwoman. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, since we're talking about speed limit, um, will there be signs going up somewhere on North Street? Or we don't have any signs that say twenty-five miles an hour?
Yes, I would.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it in North Street?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, well, just with regard to North Street, there's also no street markings there. Uh, it was repaying and there's, as far as I'm aware, there's no like interchange between the two lanes or.
Most, most streets they don't do that on because of the cost.
Who is, who is they?
The city.
The city, too, this.
Yeah.
To not Martha Street. Okay. Um, I, well, I just wanted to thank you first of all for setting up exponentially. Um, and I recognize cost and time and all barriers. And I'm curious if it's possible, would that be possible within the meeting? It also felt, and, and in terms of other strategies, whether it's cameras, speed bumps, I know this is a chronic issue that keeps being brought up. And it's have to be strategic.
I don't recommend cam, well, cameras, we can't use for speed enforcement purposes in Michigan. Um, and I don't recommend speed bumps anywhere. Um, I mean, we have enough potholes as it is without adding speed bumps to the roads. Um, the one thing I would recommend possibly in some of the main corridors is some of the signs that tell cars how fast they're going. That does get people's attention and slow them down at times. Um, those are about four thousand dollars a piece for the cheapest ones that you can get that amount of holes. Um, so again, it's expensive, but it does work in some areas like Michigan Avenue or some of the um, more readily used through streets. Um, generally on, on streets that aren't heavily used, they're not going to make a difference to most people that are speeding. They're in speed anyways.
Um, just so that council's aware, because this is not something that ordinarily the council will see. Um, the public safety department, I, I've got it probably attributed to the department's recruiting of ambitious young officers because I have seen a noticeable uptick in the number of operating while intoxicated offenses that are getting sent to me. And those generally stem from doing traffic enforcement. It would be somebody gets stopped for running stop sign or speeding and tran, it, it, uh, transitions into an, an OWI arrest and um, the new officers have just been, I've been really impressed because we never used to have this many. And so it's either they're doing a lot more enforcement or people are, and helping or agreeing a lot more, but I think it's the enforcement. So, I mean, to the public safety department's credit, I mean, it's so again, it's not something that the council would generally see, but my office sees it because I've, I've gotten so many after-hours weekend, uh, warrant requests from the department. It's a little mind-boggling. The one thing, just a point of information, sorry, I just didn't notice that. Can we check with our technology because ours, I have a couple of bills and they can't access the Zoom or the YouTube link. So I'm wondering, one, are we recording and two, is it live? Um, but I just received a few people trying to log in and.
It says it's recording. It might not be broadcasting for some reason, but.
Okay, so you're probably fixed that. You know, just want, just want to double check.
Um, the one thing I have to be careful about when I, when I tell officers to do enforcement is I can't set quotas for officers, um, as a chief. It's, it's against the law for me to do that. So I can't make them go out there and see the cars that they need to stop and tell them they have to do a certain amount in a certain period of time type of thing. So, um, but, uh, obviously my encouragement of doing more traffic enforcement seems to have worked for this week anyways. So hopefully this continues.
Um, that's very helpful. I think for the, the police state and our community state, just being able to document this and, and I know you're sharing more with us, but really making that information as noticeable as possible.
I've been working on trying to get more information to you, like along those lines. It just takes time to get everything in place and, and go in the right direction. But.
I'm sure, yeah. I, yeah, that's why I just want to make it clear again to, I know your point, what we're looking for. Um, because it sounds like from whatever that there are people who feel that when they call, nothing happens. So being able to address that disturbance, I think will be important.
The, the traffic enforcement is very difficult when I said on individual streets. If, if, if I get specific times that things are happening, it's a lot easier to get somebody out there than it is. I mean, it happens all day. Well, it doesn't happen all day because I've sat on the streets for hours and never seen a speeding car. Um, and like I said, the officers themselves don't have hours to sit and watch for speeding cars. Um, at best, they probably have a half an hour between calls at times and so forth. It just depends on the day, obviously. But, uh, again, when, when they're not busy is usually when the streets aren't busy. When the streets get busy, they get busy and they're not there for the traffic.
So maybe, first of all, I.
You have comments, questions, Kika?
City manager's there.
Okay, yeah. You turned it up. I'm so sorry, it's going to be my situation. Is it lovely?
So, the M ninety-nine meeting with, um, some representatives. Good discussion.
Mayor Clinton Jackson, too? Yes, um, the sidewalks on eight oh six, um, north, I mean, north, um, eighty Street, north that tree, when it came up. The area has not been replaced, the sidewalk hasn't been pushed it. And they wanted to know when that was going to be.
Do you want for a discussion or? Send this to you, Mr. Bryan.
I'll get to it down and then you can.
I should. Good.
So, I, when I was looking at, uh, the food trucks and things like that and some other business license to make this point in time, and someone brought to my attention that, um, um, they were trying to get a license and it was suggested or, um, they were given information about if they had a felony in their background that we, I don't know who we are, um, would prefer not to support that. So I want to know if that's something that's in writing or if that's something that's going to be in writing. And if it is, how did we come to that conclusion? So, the gentleman gave me some specifics, uh, about him being able to get his licensing and he was told that, um, he couldn't get it because of felony reasons because we would prefer not to do that.
Which, can I ask which licensing?
I'll talk to him about. Because that should have anything to do.
Any other highlights? No, you. Do I have anybody who would like to stand up for a couple of moments? Please state your name and your address.
Say, Elizabeth, say, create eight oh two Austin Ave. I am here, um, speaking on behalf of that basketball rim for an expanding. I don't want the kids to be ticketed, nor the parents, but.
For an expanding, I don't want the kids to be ticketed nor the parents, but um, we, I, when they, when it, when they put it in the street, um, the neighbors, you know, we had concerns about it because on Mallory Street, which is very low, they fly up and down that street all day long. First, it starts, it wakes everybody up. We don't need a new alarm. Seven o'clock in the morning is this certain kind. I mean, they fly down the street now. We have been asking this person to move it and they didn't move it, so I, um, the street is narrow and the rim is, it was in the street, so if I'm going north, I have to stop if a car is coming east, which is what happened, and so you give that car time to um, go by, and as I was going to, um, you know, go forward, the front of my tire caught that base which was sticking out in the street. And now I have a five hundred dollar deductible. Because I, I, and then when that happened, now Officer Kenny was real nice about it, got the report. And we thought, we thought it was broke, but the next day, the very next day, it was put right back in the street. So I flagged down the officer and told him to go make them take down. He said, okay, and rolled right back. He rolled right back, and I couldn't believe it, so I complained, complained, I contacted my councilman, uh, Councilwoman Vicki Clark, and then nothing happened until Councilwoman Reed had an altercation. Nothing happened. And then at, prior to that, I had been downstairs complaining to the police about a certain individual driving a vehicle not licensed, registered, nothing. And they said they had been seeing this person, and I asked them, listen, you need to stop that. If, if suppose they get stopped, they don't have a license, not a wrong with that person. After I hit that pole, ended up backing into my car. So who do I send my five hundred dollar deductible to? The police that didn't make him park that car? Or the ones that didn't make them move it? You know what I'm saying? I feel that I should build a city for my five hundred dollar deductible. Because I was told that Chief, they spoke with Chief Kip and he told them that they could have it in the street and remove it at night. My Mallory Street has no, you can't see anything. We have no street lights on that, on that street. It is pitch black. So I feel I should be able to bring my bill and they just got my party into the city of Albany and make them pay my deductible.
My name's David Gunsberg. Address is nine thirty Elliott Street. We stay tight because we listened to your emergency motion and your emergency ordinance, and I'm asking you to respectfully reconsider that emergency vote. You have standards, you have published procedures. Mayor Schneider got it right. You have processes you're supposed to follow. You cannot just arbitrarily make up rules. The public relies on the fact that you have a first reading, a second reading, and ordinance effective dates. And yet you come in here under the fiction that you have an emergency, pass a, a new rule that basically takes everybody out of the recreational grow and process business. That's what you just did tonight to your city. Now, the public didn't have noticed of this. The public thought you were doing something else. Instead, you came under this fiction of an emergency. It can't be an emergency for you to go around your own published and lawful procedures. You can't violate your own rules respectfully. You don't have the authority to do that. The gentleman that got up here during the prior public comment had bought a building, spent two million dollars on a building with a prospective of filing for recreational grow and processing licenses. This isn't marijuana that's going to hit the streets. This is to grow and process and sell it someplace else. You just took that building away from him. You know, now you just bought a two million dollar lawsuit. We're nine thirty Elliott Street. You just took our rights away from us. I'm not saying we're threatening a lawsuit. I really love lawsuits, but I represent that guy on a contingency. I'm a lawyer. I represent him on a contingency. And the Harkness Law Firms, Law Firms, they make a lot of money, respect you, God bless you, you know, defending that kind of a case. Because you can't take people's property without due process. It's just not legal. It's unconstitutional. So the mayor got it right, as did Councilman Williamson. With all due respect, you can't act arbitrarily. I, I'm asking you again to please reconsider, put it on your next agenda. Give your normal standard published procedures an opportunity to work. If people file, they'll file. You'll deal with that. Until September, you have an ordinance in place. You did. You can't just wipe it off the books without notice to the public. So give people an opportunity to follow the procedures that you folks set up and that they act in reliance on and not just take away their property rights. I'm asking you again respectfully, put this back on the agenda and reconsider it and give your rules an opportunity to work. You don't want the message out there to the people who want to come invest in, in Albion that you guys just come in and change your rules like this at night without anybody having any public notice and opportunity to deal with this. That's what you just did tonight. Don't get that reputation. That'll kill your community dramatically. Thank you very much for listening to me. Please reconsider.
I'd like to talk about the mayor, Martin, but uh the buckle leaves. I didn't know that it was um against the ordinance to break the leaves out into the street until I went to a rentals um meeting. And somebody, the lady up here who just was hired for something, I don't know, speak, code enforcement sign, I'm not sure. And she the one told me you couldn't break your leaves out in the street and uh, if leaves is in the street, you're supposed to pick them up. I'm like, well, if the leaves, if the trees, put the leaves in the street, why am I responsible? The people, we have a street sweeper. Do that. So this is what I told my um, my rental people. Don't put the leaves in the street no more because you will get fined or I'll get fined or somebody get fined, then I'm gonna put that on you to pay for it. So a lot of people don't know about this here leaf thing. Because I didn't know. She said if you, if you live in a um, an alleyway, your house is going to an alley, you're responsible to clean up the trash in the alley. I didn't know that either, you know, so it's a lot of things that we don't know that need to be out there. You know, just like she said, town hall meeting, we need to know these things in the town hall meeting. Um, I don't always, I don't read the newspaper, word of mouth. I get information or Facebook, something like that. But if we don't know what to do, how can we change it? If we don't, if the information is not out there, how can we um, a heed to the rule? So my thing is, I'm liking this here town hall meeting. I, I was at town hall meeting and I complained about the holes in my street, you know, but I want to know what you're doing about it. And when are you going to do about it? You know, it's messing up my tires. I just got new tires. But the thing of it is, information is very important. If you don't have the information out there, we can't do nothing about it. Then we still got problems, but I'm liking this here that you bring information to us so that we can deal with it. So thank you.
Sorry, I have to get that one more time because what I have to say now would take longer than three minutes. But I am concerned, what, concerned about um, the land bank getting my mom, all you know who my mother was, and they came to her two weeks before she passed and presented a plaque with her name on it, and they picked a spot for her to, for a memorial park. Now, we understood, we, we, we really, you know, knew why they didn't do it last year. But they have not, they've only planted a few flowers. And they keep saying that they're going to get started. Well, this year will be gone too. And my concern is, and I'm glad that they're getting that Coca-Cola sign and all that done. But my mom was a big asset to Albion as far as making it look just beautiful. And I feel that we shouldn't have to wait any longer to have this done. Um, poor Juanita, Juanita Solis, she's been trying real hard to have the land bank. They said they have, they, we've seen the blueprint. We've, the family, we went out there and kicked out where we wanted everything to be and nothing has been done. And, and the family is starting to get frustrated because she deserves that and more from this, but she really, we, we, we really want to know. You know, because we have family members, we're, we're trying to get everybody here for that event. And we're just curious to know when will it start and be done? Will it be this year, next year, five years from now? We, we just need to know when.
And when?
It's at the corner of, well, the land bank. Yes, at the corner of Chauncey and Austin, right across from Billings. That empty lot right there, that's where they decided to put it.
But the land bank owns that property?
Well, we were told that the land bank is over all of that. They, they're supposed, yeah, they, they're, they're the one, they're the ones that's um getting, I guess, trying to get people to lay the foundation or whatever.
So Chauncey and what?
Um, Austin.
So there's a plaque already made or?
Well, yes, it's to go on a bench that they're going to put on a, on cement, so they have it whatever, and they're gonna they said they want to have this big ceremony or whatever, but we it, it hasn't happened, and it'll be two years. She's gone in August.
I was just gonna add that I, I know of this project because the land bank utilized money from the community foundation to help with the verification of that lot, so if you could leave me your email and your phone number, I would gladly follow up for you.
That way she needs to be on it.
So it's section, the question that I posed is section twenty-two, um, I'm gonna miss it. Okay, that is being utilized for felony people now, and, and the language doesn't say that, but it's a, a matter of discretion by the way it reads of how it's being utilized. So I want to address that in the next meeting.
Is that section twenty-two?
Twenty-six.
Any other politics? No, you.
Just a few updates for you. Um, so the city had a great safety inspection quality assurance review last week, Thursday, July eighth. Um, they didn't select one, we have nine structures here, we selected one to review. Of course, it's our worst bridge structure in town, the North Albany Bridge, but um, having that is up for complete replacement in twenty twenty-three, um, and we received a good review, so that is a good thing. And just wanted to remind everyone, we do have annual bridge inspections and they are completed by my leading associates. So the downtown development authority or DDA had their regular meeting last Wednesday, July fourteenth. They discussed the um, creation of a social district in Farmers Ridge. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August eleventh. Um, I just wanted to bring this government's attention. The city hall finance window will be closed for the morning of Wednesday, July twenty-first, so this Wednesday um, for a department team training. Um, the window will reopen at one P M, so we encourage our residents to utilize their drop box during that morning hours. Um, or you can wait until one P M when the finance window reopens. And just to remind everyone, we will have a study session to discuss how to utilize the city's art funds, the American Rescue funds act, and it is scheduled for Thursday, July twenty-ninth. That's soon. Any questions for our sitting committee?
So we do have a wire catch for our meetup and meetup, so if folks are wondering when the hours are, we have that in front of us in locations. Okay, councilor, comments? Yes, Councilor.
Um, Councilmember Clark and I are excited to announce that precinct one and precinct six will be having their shared joint precinct meeting at the Bone Theater on Wednesday, August fourth at six P M. There's an online flyer that both um, Councilmember Clark and I have, and we also have paper ones that will be distributed to our folks. Um, and there is a kind of a set agenda where those, the agenda items are being added as we get closer and closer. In fact, today the school decided that they were going to come and give an update as well, so I just want to make sure everyone knows that Councilmember Clark and myself are hosting our joint um, town hall at the Bone Theater on Wednesday, October fourth.
Oh, yes, um, and then this Thursday, um, precinct three will be having a informal meeting on July twenty-second, which is suspended at seven o'clock to eight thirty at St. Paul Lutheran Church. And then also we have a joint um, town hall, town hall meeting with precinct three and one. And that will be at Holland Park on on August the twelfth.
Not Holland Park. We'll have to let you know because it's one to be with Habitat for Humanity and they have a home theater that they've done and they'd like us to have there.
Are you able to have a large group inside that home?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they want to give a tour, so he was, he suggested that we may make arrangements for the opportunity school because the house is just right down the street from there and cases, not a good thing, that would be a good thing to do. And then we can just go right down to Turbine Street to where the house is.
Any others, the council member comments?
Yes, Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone who took the time to come out to the town hall meeting last Monday and share what they did with us and um, for all people who helped in coordinating that and for our fellow council member Laura for um, all the work that she has done to connect with residents and um, and to support me in hosting my first town hall.
Councilor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have a few things. Colin, do we need a notice to the public about what we just did?
So what the charter says um is uh in your section six point three of the charter, it says, no ordinance shall be passed at the same meeting at which is introduced unless it is declared to be an emergency ordinance by a vote of not less than five hours of the council. So in an ideal world, um, you know, hypothetically, you ideally like to have it designated as an emergency ordinance before the meeting, but there's nothing that precludes you from designating it as an emergency ordinance at the meeting. So as far as the charter is concerned, um, you could designate it as an emergency ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Um music in the parks, uh, Victory Park. This weekend, there was a celebration birthday, and for the second time, I witnessed that um um, families, um, our officers have been going out and, you know, tell people that their ocean is, is too loud. I'm just wondering, when we have music out there and families are playing, no matter what kind of music it is, um, does the same thing happen for swinging at the show? Because I'm being asked about these questions because of um, people that do functions up under the uh, big pavilion out in Victory Park. And they get the police call them, tell them the music's too loud or whatever. Um, but then they come and say, hey, well, do y'all do the same thing for swinging at the show? So I'm kind of catch twenty-two here. Uh, if somebody could help me out, please let me know or shoot me an email. Um, there was also at our uh, this meeting, at our town hall meeting, it was said that there was an email from Dr. Byza about the M ninety-nine project, so I may have missed it. If anybody else got it, can you please shoot it to Linda and I? Because we did not know about this email. Um, and like I said, we may have missed it. Um the little lady on a scooter, how do we keep her safe? What do we need to do for the sidewalks to keep her out of the street? And it's serious because she rides it at nighttime, you know what I'm saying? So we need to do something or just try to tell her, what, ask her, what does she need to stay on the sidewalk? Um, and I'm being asked about a Main Street match. Um, if you happen to go to the DDA meeting or the EDC meetings, this is where um, this person told me that they would have to go to, to receive this match. I know nothing about it. So I'm just asking you if you um, go to another EDC or DDA meeting to ask about this Main Street match that they say the city is supposed to um, put up some funds and these property owners um, are supposed to pay like ten percent on it. And the way our fund balance is looking, I don't think we can even try to think about it, but I don't know where they got this Main Street match from. And so um, and another thing is landowners and cars. Um, as we know in our precinct meetings, we should wear our lingers. Some don't have them um for whatever reason, and I'm not sure if we have um, cars for all council members, but I just wanted to put that out there as just a reminder. So see if we can get that brought up over. So um, with that being said, I think um, no matter- So um, with that being said, I think um, no, I have one more. Uh, may I ask the chief some? Okay, so at our meeting, it was talking about making this house on Marion Street a nuisance. I'm concerned about um, housing for people, period, Alvin. We are limited. So if we make this house a nuisance, does that say um, people can live there? How, how does that go?
That's probably better.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Declaring a house a nuisance?
Can you tell me what that looks like and, and?
It's, so there's no. It's a, it's on a case by case basis. I mean, generally it depends on what codes are being violated. Um, you know, I would, I would say um, it could be anything from having an extremely unkempt lawn, you know. Grass and uh, other vegetation growing out of control could be a nuisance or um, we've, we've got, we've done public nuisance lawsuits for homes. Um, that have collapsed roofs, um, broken windows. Um. We had one that uh, over on Chestnut Street that, I mean, had so much garbage in the yard, you couldn't even see the lawn. So I mean, things like that are, would be a very clear examples of public nuisance or uh. Beyond that, you know, like I said, it'd be case by case. It would just depend on what the facts are, but those are some examples of, of public nuisances that we've addressed in the past.
Okay, so if a house is in like um, in, in this case, the house, um. The person that owned the house, he passed away and so it's now in probate court. Nothing, I don't think can be done or anything right now. Am I right? I'm just trying to find and make sure I understand, but if the house is in like probate court, it's still nothing that we can really do until we get. To whose side it's going to, to who the estate is going to, right?
Yeah, and so, so the problem is if it's, if it's in probate court, what would, I mean hypothetically, we could do. Uh, like a public nuisance lawsuit against the estate, but like you said, I mean, the estate is gonna transfer the property to. One of the beneficiaries of the estate, whether it's a kid, relatives or whatever, I mean, um. You know, hypothetically, we could put what's called the list pendance on the property, which basically would prevent the property from being transferred while. The lawsuit is pending. I probably wouldn't do that. I would just probably, unless there's a, unless, unless there's a real threat to public safety, you know, like a collapsing building or. You know, a collapsing home or something that could injure somebody or some, or somehow um, cause a health issue for the surrounding properties like, like vermin, like rats or something like that. I'd probably wait until it got transferred because um, the probate process isn't, I wouldn't, there's, there's nothing fast about any court process, but. You know, generally people are eager to get the property transferred and, and close up the estate. So. But that's how I would handle that. I mean hypothetically, we could go after the estate. Um. It's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? It is great that we are getting back to precinct meetings. I have enjoyed hearing um, from citizens, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly. Things that we need to address. Um, so I highly encourage folks to make it to their precinct meetings. Anybody who um, wants to bring any items to our attention, that is the, the best time to do it. So. Um, I encourage you all to continue to spread the word and to get more people involved. Uh, do I have a motion? We don't have any council members absent, uh. Motion to reject.
So.
Council member Ford, yes. Free, yes. Jackson, yes. Aller, yes. Lenu, yes. Warrenson, yes.
Yes, David, Jerry, Mary, Kitty, Tito.